Oh, I like that. Okay. Great. So I welcome everyone to the Village Williamsville Work Session for Monday, June 14th. And we have, we'll get right into our guest this evening, Doug Kern from Rocky Horse Productions. And I'm assuming or hoping everyone at least has that contract that Doug had given to us, not run some copies. Anybody not have it? Okay, because I can here, I can run some copies too. Do you want to just take this in here?
What I do recall.
And there's his resume.
One or two points at least. And I'm saying this more to Doug.
Yeah.
The rest of the board probably feel the same way, that we're going to ask you more to be a very close coordinator with our contact person.
That's great.
Because we, I guess, speaking for the board here, the board wants to be sure that we are, as owners of the meeting house, want to be the ones that have potentially the last say, or at least always are in the loop.
Sure.
And like, we have, we have a person here at the village that does all of the coordinating and scheduling for the meeting house as well as other stuff. And it would have to be like working with that person quite frequently.
Sure.
But other than that, the rush of the warning, I'd rather chip maybe opportunities on board.
All right, Basil, I am on, but comments on what?
I always look at anything.
On the
If you have any questions.
Suggested sort of scope of services for Doug Kern and Rocky Horse at the meeting house.
Well, you know, it really depends on how you guys want to do this, to structure this. Because frankly, I'm not clear from exactly how this is intended to be structured, because the last time we talked about this, I heard, you know, I thought we, there was some discussion about essentially him more or less marketing the property on behalf of the village, essentially in a volunteer capacity. And that's one thing, but if we actually wish to have a contract with him where he has the ability to manage the property and enter into contracts and things like that, that's a total, I'm not saying we can't do that, but I need to know what, you know, is that the arrangement we're looking for? Or are we essentially looking for essentially rejuvenation of the, a committee to essentially promote that property, but that the actual contracting and reservations and all that will run through Village Hall?
That's kind of what I had thought we were going to pursue. I mean, I know that the community was pleased that we weren't selling the meeting house. And apparently there was a petition that was going around, and there were 300 plus people on that who had offered their time and services if the building wasn't sold. So I was expecting that we would have perhaps Doug chair, be the new chairperson of the meeting house committee, and perhaps reach out to Sue Fenster, who's organizing that petition, and see if we could possibly get some of that, those names and contacts, and could reach out to those folks to see, you know, if they're willing to step up to the plate and help out.
Well, whatever committee might assist Doug, I really think Doug, with his background, and you can, please, you can pitch in here, really is going to be the leader of that group, no matter who it is. It's his ideas and his contacts that will generate the business for the meeting house. Chip, we don't want him doing anything with the building, though, other than oversee what goes into the building. As far as the physical building itself, I mean, that's still a whole separate issue.
No, that, that, you know, I understand that, and that's not really my concern, that he would be making decisions about the village. But even if he's going to be booking the building, I don't, I'm not saying that I necessarily have a legal concern about that, but that's a different sort of legal relationship. He's acting as an agent for the village. And we need to make sure, and if he's doing that, if we're hiring a private party, it's still a public building. And a public entity renting out a building has some different legal constraints that it needs to operate in than a privately owned building. So we just need to make sure that if that's the arrangement we have, we still need to have then some oversight and some guidelines that are gonna provide some guardrails on what, what a private individual or entity can do in terms of managing that building on our behalf.
Right. So, so what kind of what you're saying is, I mean, I think there's two roads here that we can pursue. Road number one would be that we restart, reinstate a committee, name a meeting house committee, events committee, whatever we want to call it. And Doug would be the chairperson, and it would be along the same lines as when I was on the meeting house committee. We had a group of volunteers. There's no limit to how many volunteers we have. And those said volunteers would work with Doug to, you know, get, get events into the building and so forth. But when we were doing that, okay, does anybody else see this? I'm sorry, I'll just, so there's one of each, that Doug's resume, and then there's the proposal, so just. Sorry, what was I, oh, so the meeting. Yeah, so that would be the first way. So essentially a reinvigorated, I'll call it, meeting house committee. The second way would be somewhat of what I think Chip is getting at, would be some type of like a lease agreement, if you will. If we're giving Doug the ability to kind of act as, he wouldn't be, so he wouldn't be a paid employee of the village, but he would be acting on behalf of the village of Williamsville as a representative and agent. And I feel that, you know, in that capacity, perhaps, you know, we need to have more of like, some type of written contract agreement. Whereas like, you know, with the meeting house committee, it was a volunteer committee. And that just found the auspices of any other volunteer committee that we have. We have like 12 other committees of those in the village. So that's kind of the way I see it, but you know, we're going to discuss it so everyone can chime in.
Actually, when I was asked to put the polls together, there was a lot of open-ended questions. I really had no idea which way you wanted to go. So this proposal was, was pretty much the second way, okay, with managing the whole, the whole shebang. I'm open to anything. My goal is to promote and help the meeting house be utilized a lot more than it is right now. Okay, so I can go either way. It doesn't, it doesn't really matter to me. Because like I said, there was a lot of open questions in that proposal that I gave up. I mean, there's a lot of internal things that that I can do from the promotion and marketing standpoint of, of the meeting house. Through my contacts, through weddings, and the Jazz Buffalo, and the Buffalo Music Hall of Fame, and other venues that, it just, the word just needs to get out there, plain and simple. So I really have no preference, one way or another, how you want to handle it. My only concern is to, once we pick a way, is to have a very clear and concise, what can the committee do? Or what I can do, or what we can do. Because there's, there's, there are some things that are, like, that hinder the use of the meeting house to some outside groups. You know, so there are, you know, minor things, day-to-day operations that, you know, would have to be totally, or I would like to have clarified, no matter which way we go.
Okay, so why don't we, so why don't we jump to that? I think that's on page two, that questions, points of discussion.
Yeah, well, the first one is right off top is reporting strike. You know, so that goes back to the first question we had.
So, so the way that our committee would be set up would be you as chairperson, you would have somebody who sits on this board as an appointed liaison for the committee. And that really is, that liaison is really your go-between, between yourself and your committee and the rest of the village board. So if there's a request for work that needs to be done, or an amenity that needs to be purchased, or something along those lines, you know, and even I'm sure above and beyond that, that would be your, your contact person directly. In what capacity will be able to make decisions on behalf of the meeting house without approval from a reporting entity? You know, we have always, I at least, I can say the committees I've always worked with, you know, the trustee has really been there as a liaison role. And I know Matt can maybe speak to this, as far as, you know, giving committees the ability to make decisions that autonomy, because after all, that's why you're here, right?
Right.
If it were, if we were just sitting here and we were going to take everything that you brought to us and say, we don't really think, you know, I mean, we do really want to have the volunteers who are spending time on the committee to have their voices heard, and then really to try to put that, you know, and come to fruition with what it is they, you know, they'd like. And that doesn't, that doesn't always work out. I mean, because sometimes there may be a committee idea that's a great idea, or it sounds like it's great when it's being discussed, but then when it comes back to the board, we may have someone like Ben Villan in China that'll say, you know, that really, you know, it's going to be tough to do. It isn't feasible, it isn't cost-effective, it's long-term maintenance. So, you know, things along that line. But did that answer the question?
Yeah, it does, it does pretty much, you know. I'm okay, I'm good with that. Yeah, just like, like if I'm dealing with like Jazz Buffalo, and they, and they come in and say, yeah, we'd like to do, you know, for the month of June, I could do Jazz Wednesdays. Every Wednesday, we're going to have a jazz concert in there, but I need X, Y, Z done, you know. Do, will the committee, myself, have the ability to say, if it's within reason, yeah, we can do this? We can, you know, you can, you can sell refreshments or whatever it is without going all the way through the board process. Because sometimes when you have to go back and go through the whole board process, it takes some times, and they might need to have answers, you know, fairly quickly.
Well, as far as selling liquor. Yeah, I know. Well, I'm just looking back, like, we did hold some Christmas events where there was an issue where we were hoping to have, like, sell wine, but then we ended up not being able to. And we just had, then the wine was donated, and we had somebody giving out samples during the event, if I recall. There was some kind of issue that we needed to do with probably with the state.
I think ultimately what would probably have to happen is relatively short of a roadmap of, which would just have to be established.
Exactly.
And as long as we're, you know, as long as we're not running afoul of, you know, laws or alcohol rules or whatever, like, as long as we're staying in the lane, whatever that roadmap is, then you just continue operating, right?
Yeah.
But so I think that the gist would be that, since, since I think this is sort of a new format, right? It's slightly different, it's a slightly different mandate for this committee, the rules might be a little different, but we set those ground rules.
Okay. Fair enough.
Because, because that comes to it in question too, about like budget a lot and purchasing, things like that. There are rules about how that, how that's done, what the, you know, it's that, plus it has to be budgeted.
Right. Yeah, that, which leads to my, the, the number two on here is the annual budget. Miscellaneous expenses, I know, like, there is microphones, and there's, there are some sound system there, there's a projector there, and a lot of it's not working. You know, so if I need to go in there and I need to replace cords and stuff like that, you know, how much leeway do I have to just go out and purchase stuff like this to make it up to where we need to get it back, without having, again, you know, do I have a, will the committee or myself have a budget to do that, a miscellaneous budget, you know, stuff like that? Because I do know, like, the two, the two speakers that are, that were there before COVID, I betters it said, you know, we're not working the projector. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure was, was hooked up properly to work. So I'm saying that there are, there are small things like that that might have to be taken care of. You know, and.
All purchasing should go through the hotel.
Right. So that would be, that would be one of those, you know, ground rules kind of thing. And I think as well, because right now, we're about to begin our next fiscal year. Within the month, and, or we just did.
We just did.
We just, we just started this year, so there's no budget for a meeting house. You know, of that kind, right? So, you know, in the short term, it might be a little ad hoc kind of thing, but then by, by budget time next year, which is usually like January, February, there'd be an expectation that you'd have a, you know, a wish list.
Yeah, okay.
Right?
Fair enough.
Yeah, and I, but I do think, you know, we want to, you know, you're obviously being very generous with your time and volunteering, stepping up to do this. So we, and we all sitting here want to see the meeting house be successful, right, and not a financial burden. So I think we're all willing to meet you more than halfway and get that building, what it would need to like have a Wednesday jazz night.
Sure.
So.
That's great. The next one was maintenance. Of course, we just, we talked, we hit on that, you know, all maintenance has got to go through, you know,
the building department or whatever.
Yeah, so, and for that, we typically, we haven't been cleaning, because it's been closed throughout COVID, but we do have a cleaning service that cleans the building. How often are they over there? Okay, so there is a building service, right, or a cleaning service that does that. We did get trash cans over there. It used to be you had to take your trash with you when you left.
Yeah.
So now there are trash cans there, which makes it a lot easier for anyone running the building. And, you know, maintenance requests, if there's a light that isn't working or something, you know, we could, if you let us know about it, we can certainly have our crew, our department of works crew, take a look at it, see if it's an easy fix, and if it's easy, I'm sure they'd be able to do it. Typically, the way it flows is the chairperson will contact the liaison, who will then let Ben know. Because otherwise Ben's got 25 people calling him up and saying, I need this done, I have this. So you would go through your liaison for anything that you needed.
All right. Again, moving on to social media and the web, the access to it, that was put in there. Because if you look back to the original portion of it, I kind of envisioned the meeting house, the objective, achieving the objectives through three different, you know, venues. One is through the rental, you know, straight rental, you know, hey, want to have a wedding here, come on in, let's, let's, let's get this squared away. And then also was internal events, you know, like I mentioned, maybe we want to have our own jazz night, okay? So to be, to be able to have access or shared access to the Facebook page or Twitter account, saying, hey, you know, 20 minutes till jazz starts, you know, first 15 people here get 10% off, or sort of something like that, you know. Just to be able to have shared access to social media, so you can, we can promote it without having to say, okay, well, I want to go through, I want to promote this event, you know, at the last minute, I want to change something, I have to go through this person to that person. So that, that was the social media aspect of it.
So, so typically, all of our social media is managed by our community development director, Keaton De Priest. And we've had this conversation before, where other committees have asked if they could have access to the village Facebook page and so forth. And we've, we've found that it's best if it all comes through one streamlined, essentially, location. But, you know, I don't know, you know, the Twitter is something I don't really do, so maybe.
Right, I would be looking for the village.
Right.
Facebook page, I would do, just to be, if we have the meeting house one, then I can be able to post, you know, share posts, things with and stuff like that, you know, you know, because there's, there's always that last minute, you know, promotion you want to do, you know.
Honey, honey, what are your thoughts on that? Do you have any?
Well, yeah, committees have asked about this before. And generally, we've said no, because it is better to have one person funneling. But an example of one group that does it well, and we kind of work together, is the Garden Walk. And they post up your route.
Yes.
It's done by, I believe, Deb Ames and Diane Loomin. They just kind of work together, and, you know, if, if I have something that they can share on Facebook, you know, we work together to cross-share. So to have one for the meeting house, as long as it's kept up, I don't have a problem with it. You know, if this is something that's needed for the meeting house to take off, as long as I am co-managing it, I'm totally fine with that. I mean, I'm available most, most times, except for when I go on a rare vacation.
There you go. Enjoy.
But, you know, there's, you know, I mean, I know that there's times where, you know, I might not be available, you might want to post something.
Well, you know, exactly, you know, content is key when it comes to social media, relevant content, and fresh content.
Exactly.
So, you know, I just want to make sure that we are able to keep the Twitter feeds, the Facebook feeds for the meeting house current and, and, you know, current and, you know.
And I think.
Off train of thought, sorry.
It's okay. And I think if the meeting house were to have its own, it would be better, because trying, trying to have a varied amount of content on Facebook or Twitter, you don't want to have all the same stuff, because then people will lose their attention. And it all goes by algorithm, and how, basically, how long it shows up on your screen. If it's on your screen for a few seconds, they know you've probably read it, so you're going to see more posts continually throughout time. So I would hate to infiltrate a lot of the village-based posts with stuff that's only meeting house.
Right.
So to have something that's only meeting house, I think would be a great thing. You know, I think this is one of those exceptions, kind of like you have occasion.
I think there, I think there is a meeting house Facebook page, right?
If there may be, I don't know if it's an actual sanctioned meeting house page. Maybe like a meeting house fan page, because we did not create that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, good. Well, that's a really good point. So Keaton's good with that. I'm, I'm fine with it. It's the rest of the board. Yeah, absolutely. As Chip about, is if he's got this meeting house page, advertising or promotion of private events. We are not supposed to promote private affairs.
Like, well, I mean, it depends what, what sort of private events. I mean, for instance, we have, we have had an agreement with Rocky Horse the past, you know, before the pandemic, right? Where they would be putting on productions in there, and I don't see any problem with us or them promoting that. So I guess, I, so in general, I don't necessarily see a problem with, I mean, it depends what sort of private events we're talking about, I guess, as to whether or not I'd be concerned about our ability to promote those events. I mean, look, the bottom, I mean, the, the building is publicly owned, all right, and there was a decision made that it's, where it's going to stay that way. At least for the time being, we can use it for valid public purposes. The, the difficulty, the, you know, where, where we, where we could run into issues is if we are allowing it to be used for things that arguably are not. And, and particularly if we're somehow incurring, you know, public money or committing public money on things that are not consistent, it's not a legitimate public purpose.
I guess I'm confused about how, how this differs from anything we've done in the past.
Yeah, I mean, right, I mean, we've done, right, we've rented, so this is my understanding. I could absolutely be wrong, because I really haven't been very involved in exactly what the village has done with the meeting house in the past. But, right, we rent it out for weddings and things like that. We've had theater productions there. I don't know what sorts of other things there's, I don't have any concern, I mean, there are lots of municipalities. I mean, it's probably, arguably, I suppose somebody could say that that's not really a municipal purpose to be running an event space, but it's certainly not uncommon, it's not unheard of, for sure. So I'm not particularly concerned about doing that. Sometimes municipalities come into ownership of structures just like this, and they, and they purchased it or acquired it certainly for a public purpose, which is to preserve it. And one of the ways you preserve it is you activate it, and you allow it to be used and to generate some revenue. So I don't really have any real concerns about the village continuing to do those sorts of things. And I'm not even saying I have any particular concerns necessarily about using a third party to market that or manage it, as long as we structure it properly. Although if we do that, because right now, right, if somebody rents the facility, they enter an agreement with the village. Right, we have a rental agreement, that's our agreement, and they're providing us insurance, and they're doing things like that. If we're going to have a third party involved in there, which may make perfect sense, because maybe it's just not something we have the capacity to do as well as we would like to do, and a third party might be able to do that. Then we just need to structure it correctly and make sure that we, as the village, are protected. And certainly, the third party is going to want to be protected too. And, and we just, again, we need to make sure that, that what we're doing is not discriminatory. You know, things that, that we can't, as a public entity, abide by. You know, we can't have certain types of events there, you know, because they, you know, would potentially run afoul of our obligation as a municipal that, that a, that a private entity might, might be able to do. And that's what I was really sort of referring to earlier, in terms of making sure that if we're going to have a third party manage it, they have to understand that they're managing it on behalf of a public owner of that building that has certain obligations that maybe the private owner, or the private, if it was privately owned, would not have.
No, that makes, that makes 100% sense. You know, from my standpoint, if I was to facilitate a contract with somebody, you know, it wouldn't be, it would be on behalf of the village. It would be the village contract that I would just facilitate doing that.
And I believe that's, and I believe that's probably the easiest, I mean, I'm more comfortable with that sort of arrangement, I think, than, you know. And I think we could probably structure something along those lines. But yeah, I, I think that makes it a little bit easier if, if, if the contracting party remains the village and whoever's renting.
Right, so then whoever, if the jazz group, Wednesday Night, Once a Red, for example, they would need to fill out the same paperwork. Because if I were renting it for a wedding, and then we have that waiver, the indemnity agreement that they have to sign as well when they rent it.
Sure, and insurance and all that.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with Chip, I'm, I, that's where I'm most comfortable too, and.
I would be too.
Yeah, right, because then if something goes amiss, you know, you're not, you know.
Just a side note, you mentioned about types of events that are, that cannot take place there. I would like to know, not tonight, but, you know, I would like to have a list of what is available and what's not available to rent out to.
Yeah, and, and I'm not in a position to say, to identify those right now, because again, some of this may actually, you know, might have to dig back into the details of some of our grant applications, and we use CDBG money for that. There may be all sorts of clauses in there that, you know, we need to make sure that we're complying with. You know, obviously, something like a wedding reception is simple, but the question is, okay, can we hold, can somebody rent it out for a political rally? I don't know, maybe. You know, but could somebody hold it, rent it out for, for some event that would, that would potentially discriminate against certain members of the community? That's certainly could be problematic. So I'm not in a position to sort of identify those, but that's, those are the sorts of things we would have to identify.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into that and make sure that we get that list, so we're all aware of it.
Great. Now, the next couple, next five, six, seven, and eight, when I proposed together, it was more for the second scenario, where wouldn't, wouldn't have been the committee, it was just going to be myself, okay? So I really want to skip five for a second. I want to, I'd like to jump down to eight, if you don't mind.
To eight?
Yeah, number eight. And I would prefer to keep Rocky Horse. And I would prefer to keep Rocky Horse totally separate than the committee.
I agree, because we've already done the contract with you.
The contract is set. I I don't want there to be any type of. Even the hint of favoritism or anything like that. You, I've had a contact with you guys for three years. I'd like to just continue that for as long as Rocky Horse is gonna be there and hopefully it's gonna be at least nine years. Because we, we really believe that Rocky Horse with the theater in the village. Season that we put together, you know, four shows this coming season, five shows, hopefully five or six shows the following season. We can really start bringing people into the meeting house and to the other restaurants and other areas, uh, people in the area. You know, uh, you know, and do certain things like, you know, theater dinner packages with. Sorrentino's next door or or across the street with the Eagle, no, down street with the Eagle House, you know, stuff like that. So I would like to keep Rocky Horse. Totally separate out of this. Um, I am owning it and and there's really, really, you know, I mean, there's no getting around it. I. Own Rocky Horse, Rocky Horse is just me, okay? Uh, I've had it for going on sixteen years, okay, but. I don't, I don't want any, I don't want any impropriety.
Yeah, so anybody opposing that? Okay, all right, that's good.
Working title doesn't matter anymore, you know, as the head of the committee, that's fine. Um, that was just more for, if, again, the second one, if I was gonna go, you know, reach out to Mike Randall at Channel Seven and say, hey. Come on, do a story on us. It's a lot easier to say, hey, I'm just a volunteer or I'm the executive director. You know, it's a lot easier to talk when you have a title with someone to get in the door. Okay, so that's, that's pretty much that. The duration, uh, because of COVID, I I thought maybe a year might be a little. A little short, considering we're half, almost halfway through the summer already, you know, the summer rental problem. Uh, so I I would like to see, you know, something at least a two-year. Even if it's not in writing, but just a, an understanding that, hey, it's gonna take. You know, if we're gonna form the committee, it's gonna take some time to get that up and running. It's, it's gonna take some time to get the word out there. It's gonna take some time. To start getting people to be familiar with the meeting house and what it has to offer. Okay, so.
Well, since we're reformulating the committee, we can establish whatever sort of term limits. If it makes, I mean, generally speaking. And this is not discretionary board, so like, you know, parks committee and things like that. It's usually a one-year term. But that doesn't mean that we couldn't structure the chairman of the meeting house committee as two-year term and all the other volunteers are one. We can, we can make it up however we want.
And of course. If 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 you feel like falling flat. Uh, you know, you can let me go and I'm, you know, I I will not, you know, and I'm not the type of person who's gonna say, oh, no, you. You know, and so it's, you know, we're, we're working for the betterment of everything.
And that's the thing too, is that in the form of the volunteer committee, you're, you're serving at the pleasure.
The board, exactly.
Right. So, yeah, so I agree with trustee E two, whereas, you know, we can put that term, dictation, whatever. If you're more comfortable with two, um, if we were doing a contract, I would have just wanted to do one, one, a one-year contract, but since we're going with this road. Um, I'm I'm perfectly comfortable with putting that at two.
I do, I like to talk about scheduling. I have a daytime job, like pretty much everybody, uh, knows. And a lot of the times I'm gonna be showing the meeting house to different groups of stuff, it's gonna be at night, okay? Um, so I'd, I'd like to be able to have. Work hand in hand with Catherine in 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 the, in the, in the office to be able to see the schedule and to be able to. Say, okay, I'm gonna meet with the Jazz Buffalo guys tonight and, okay, what date you, yeah, they are available. Um, I'll get you the contract up and I'll pencil you in until you, and then you'll get the official one from Catherine, you know, um, I mean, there are. That's the way I like to see it work. Uh, it just gives us the ability to. Move forward and close the deal with the, with these different groups. Without saying, well, let me go check and then have to contact Catherine and have to get back the next day or two days later. Um, there are. Easy ways to do that, you know, just a, a, a simple Google shared document that I can pull up and say, yep, it's ready to go. It's, it's free.
Yeah.
That day is free, so.
I think that is a great way to do it, because otherwise you aren't gonna be having to wait until the next day, until she gets in. And confirming with the calendar and you won't have.
And her time is also very busy and sometimes she doesn't have time to get back to me that next day, you know, I. Just case in point, I reached, I reached out because I reached out, we're trying to hold some auditions. For the theater of the village and I had to change it from what she originally gave me because I didn't realize that I should have, but, uh, old homes day is starting. That week and I just don't wanna compete with that, you know, so I wanna push it back the next week, you know, to the following, you know, the following two weeks and I. Reached out to her, I still have her back, you know, so there's, you know, she's, she's very busy over there too, you know, so I don't wanna make her feel. That she has to drop everything, you know, so if we get a shared calendar that we can both access and, you know, because she's gonna be scheduling. Other events for the, for the village, you know, that that she needs to have access to, but you know, it'd be nice to have access to it also.
Yeah, I think so too. And then, you know, we would get you, obviously, we get you a key and, you know, you'd be able to, you want me to come here and like sign out here.
I still have my key.
Oh, okay.
No, we, we already did that. It was part of the, the part of the original Rocky.
We changed over to now to a fog system.
The key's working, I believe Ben is supposed to have, um.
Nope, we're all set.
Okay.
And the, the physical keys still do work.
Oh, good, okay.
The the fobs will be above and beyond.
Yeah, I just, uh, the scheduling aspect was a big concern of mine just because of, uh.
I think that's very doable. I mean, I think those calendars are pretty user-friendly and that would in fact be easiest way for you to just have. Up to minute date of what's available or what is said.
Exactly.
Yeah, we could do one just for the meeting house that is.
I wouldn't need to see.
No, that would, that would be good. Maybe you can work with Catherine and getting that set up. And, um, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions you have for me?
The only question I have, I'm thinking of the Historical Museum, which is on the second floor. Uh, at some point, they have to be involved in this as well because when they're gonna start having their openings and showings. So, um, there's gonna have to be communication as well between, I guess, Mary Lothar. Yeah, so, um, I, I, unless they're changing their openings, I believe they're what, the third Sunday?
Third Sunday of, of the month, one, one to two thirty.
Okay.
Or one to three.
Okay, so that would be something then and, um, Mary, if she, you know, wants to change it, I mean, we could certainly. Get that coordinated and that would be something that would go right on that Google Calendar. So each month, I believe they're not open though in the hot summer months. Um, there, there might, I think there's a couple of months in there they're not open. So, but we would figure that out and we would just, you know, pin that in, so when it get. Overlooked, because I know we, we've had that issue now with some weddings that have requested Sunday and it's been a wedding, it's been a day that the historical museum is open. So we haven't been able to book it, so we'd have to just coordinate all that.
Does Catherine already coordinate that?
She does.
Yeah.
Yes.
As a matter of.
The only thing, the only thing I would note about that is again, that, that, they actually have a lease is probably. Not the correct term or a license agreement with the village or had one. Uh, to occupy that space. They've continued to occupy that space essentially along the terms of that agreement, but that agreement has not been renewed. Or ratified by the board and I think well over a decade. We may want to, I mean, assuming everyone is happy with that relationship and wants it to continue in that, but we, we probably should actually renew that. Agreement and can, and the board, it just sort of, it just, unfortunately, it just sort of, I think, fell by the wayside and it actually has not been formally renewed. In, in, in quite some time.
So can we, um, yes, you're absolutely right. We should revisit that and we should ratify new contracts with the board, so. Is that something that you need to recreate, Chip, or is it just?
I mean, I, you know what, I'll pull up the old one, the, the last one, I mean, it really was just sort of renewed in the same form here and it doesn't provide for my, I mean, it just. Gives them that, that space to occupy, and it's a pretty small space as I recall. So I don't, I don't think it really needs to be changed at all, although, you know, you all, as the owner of the building, I guess, should look at it and see if. You think it should be changed at all, but if not, if we just wanna continue that. We could definitely just renew it and and have the board approve it and their board. Can approve it and then, you know, at least we'll have a, we'll have an actual agreement in place.
Okay, I like that idea.
I have a suggestion or, or, uh, I guess a suggestion would be proper. Um, I'd like to see it. You know, where I'd like to work with her, um, and see that open more than just one, two-hour stretch every month. You know, I mean, if we're doing the theater, if we're gonna be there and doing the theater in the village, you know, six shows, no. Maybe they got some volunteers there that can open up. Uh, before our shows and during intermission, so people can see what's up there and and appreciate what's up there. So I'd like, I'd like, you know, like to utilize other venues, especially mine. To, you know, start promoting that a little bit more, okay? And one thing also that you mentioned that you're gonna look at the lease that they have or. I, whatever word it is, I don't know if it's not a lease, but.
Some license.
License agreement, um, one thing that does hinder. The rental of it, when there's into performancing, um, is the lighting that's there. When you bring your own lighting in, if at all possible, if they could give, grant us access to hang lights. From the balcony, from the open window that's there, um, because right now, if. We can only get up about ten feet and you're shooting lights onto the stage and you see a lot of shadows. Okay, that a lot of performing groups don't like and may say, hey, you know, I can go down here and. You know, be a lot better, it'll be a lot better performance, but if we can. Hang lights, you know, per event, you know, from the balcony area, shooting down. So I guess my request would be to allow. Not the groups' access, but myself or a representative of myself that is. Working with the ladies that they're bringing in to make sure we can get them up high enough that it actually could, will be able to, uh, work for the, for the rental groups.
Yeah, so. I think some of that may have been done in the past, because I, I know more electricity was run up there. For that purpose.
He hasn't been able, they need to get access to the second floor is what I'm saying.
And I'm not saying to give access to the groups. I'm asking, I give, give access to myself or or the committee representative. That can work with them, so they make sure that nothing is touched, you know, and then once it's set up, it's back locked up and nobody goes back out there.
Yeah, so it's an only one-time installment then is what you're talking about?
Well, yeah, like, uh, take, take Rocky Horse for example, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna.
It wouldn't be like a permanent, you want to like.
No, un- unless, uh, I'm looking to give you my li- lighting system for Rocky Horse, unless. You know, my thing going forward is I have a, a pretty good sound system. It's gonna be available for anybody who wants to use it there, you know, that, you know, the Jazz Buffalo wants to use my sound system, I'll keep it there, you know. Same with my ladies, if, if we're gonna go up there and hang them and utilize them, but fine, it just, just gives us one more avenue. One more, one more thing to be able to sell the space.
So, I, you know, I mean, as, as Attorney Greco pointed out, we, you know, don't have an up-to-date agreement with Historical Society. So that would be one of the things that, um, we would certainly put on the table as a request of ours. Um, and I would hope that they would be, you know, open to that because I, I do think that, you know, the whole primary goal of keeping this building. Is to utilize the building and, um, and to make it be no longer a financial burden for taxpayers. So I think that if we need to go that route, um, we're gonna seriously have to consider it and I don't know exactly what that entails. And I'm certainly open to that discussion and I think everybody up here is open to that discussion as well, so.
Very good. I really have no other questions except that if we, I, it sounds like we're going to the committee, the committee way. I, I think that's the, probably the best way to start it.
I think so too, and I think attorney, our attorney is most comfortable with it.
And honestly, I think I am too.
Good, yeah. We could maybe jazz up your title a little though. Maybe inside, because I know I, when I was chair of the meeting house, when I'm calling it bids on or pricing on it, it. You know, it was just kind of, you know, maybe not so. Star spangled, I guess, so I think maybe we can.
It all depends on what, it all depends on who you're working with, you know, like I said, if, if you're dealing with, um. You know, if you're dealing with media types, uh, you know, you wanna be able to go and say, hey, I'm the director of the meeting house committee. You know, give, 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 give me. They might give you five minutes of your time other than, hey, I'm just a volunteer over there.
Yeah, that's good.
You know, so that, that was the reason behind the title.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a good conversation, you know, a good point that you're making with it, so.
That's fine.
I like director.
Director.
I think director is good because it's, you know, you know exactly who you are that way.
I guess my, my next question would be, um, I'd have a. Board member as a liaison for the committee. Wanna say thank you Basil for your help for the last three years. You've been a joy to work with. And always, always very responsive to me and I, and I appreciate it. My next question, how, how do we get the other people on board of the committee?
Uh, for like, working with your committee?
Yeah, I mean, so I, if I'm gonna be the, 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 the director of it, I got the liaison, we should give a couple, you know, three or four other people that. You know, and I said, you read, you mentioned to reach out to the lady, um, who started the petition.
Right, um, I, I, you know, I'm just using that as a starting point, um, because I know that there were quite a few, uh, villagers. Who, you know, had signed that petition, so that might be just a good jumping off point. I mean, we can certainly. Do a shout, a call out on our website, say, you know, we're reinventing the meeting house committee. We're looking for volunteers, we can also go that route, but, you know, it doesn't hurt to go, you know, two ways at once either, just to see how many people we can catch.
I guess my more important question was, is there any other village representative that needs to be part of this?
Besides the liaison?
Besides, no, no, I think liaison would, you know, and, and when we do reorg in July, uh, we, we, that's when we. Uh, July sixth is our reorg meeting, so at that point we'll sit down and we will, um. Kind of divide up and recreate the committee and then we would have someone who wants to step into that role as a liaison for that committee.
You know, if, if the board doesn't wanna use the, the Arts and Culture Committee as a, as an entity. We should probably reach out to them. Uh, for if it's gonna be a specific committee just, just for the meeting house, because several of them are interested in the meeting house.
And they would join the meeting house committee, yeah, so I'd prefer to keep the Arts and Culture Committee its own committee. Um, I think Doug is going, is this, you know, we're reinventing the meeting house committee here, so that will be a separate committee, but obviously. Arts and Culture is probably gonna overlap with a lot of what you're doing and those two committees can certainly work together, the chairs or directors of those committees.
Right.
Um, so, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, so I think the, the first thing would be, say, if you put out a call, you know, we can do a social media thing. You know, there's a volunteer application on the website. We, you know, we get. We get interested people when we say, not when we say we're looking for volunteers, but when we're looking for volunteers for, for specific things. So with reorg coming.
Sure.
In the next, and we can probably get something in the next week or so and maybe, you know, use. A lot of what Doug proposed in his proposal to us for that, as Matt was saying, like that draw to get people. Um, in, involved, maybe there's volunteers out there who have an interest in theater or they have a background in.
Sure.
Theater or the arts or, you know, something and they may be like, wow, that actually is a really good fit for me, so.
Well, the, the other thing I would offer too is that because it's not a decision-making body, they don't have to.
Well, that was my question, now I don't have to ask. Yeah, that was gonna be my question, is, uh, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I know, I do know a few people that, that have already reached out to me since they saw the. Article B and the Buffalo News, a couple, a couple, three weeks ago.
Can there's a volunteer form online that you just have to fill that out?
Yep.
Yep, if you go, if you just go to the website. Uh, if you can see the screen, Doug.
Yeah, I know where it is.
The person that just, there's, plus on the blue box.
Yeah, and that, that's really the only requirement then for the volunteers is that they just, we need to have one of the volunteer applications on file for everyone, so. But they don't need to be a village president of this committee, so they come in Buffalo, Eastermore, wherever.
I guess the next step is putting something down on paper, what this committee is gonna be and.
Putting on social media, following, would be the next thing and then we do our reorg on July sixth, so hopefully in the next few weeks we get some. You probably have some people, we probably get some people from that and then we'll put together this committee at our meeting on July sixth. And we'll sign that committee as a liaison and then. And we'll sign that committee as a liaison, and then you're off and running.
Maybe a meeting day too.
Yeah, well, right, a meeting day, typically committees meet once a month, but if, if you decide that, you know, it's once every other month, I mean, maybe there's gonna be. Need for once a month, you could maybe think of, give that some thought, like, how often you think you'd like to meet with your committee?
Sure.
Now, is this going to be a repurposing of the meeting house committee, or are we gonna call it something different?
Um, I, you know, the, the, the meeting house committee was really, I, I looked at them more as caretakers of the building. They, we did dabble in trying to get some events in there as well, but.
This is more.
This is more event driven, so I think that maybe Doug, he could give that some thought, and the board can give us some thought.
Originally was meeting house events committee, and then we dropped the events because of what you just said, it was more.
Became more.
Maintaining and fixing up so we could go back to.
For, for historic purposes, I only want to, because on our, on our minutes online, it just, it says meeting house, so. You know, so we could either use that same name, or we could come up with a different name, and then all the minutes.
Give it some thought, we don't have to decide tonight, and that could be something at reorg that we can.
You know, the working title, meeting house committee is fine, you know, the world work title.
I like the, at the events, though, the GD.
I, I had the word events back in there.
Meeting house events committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, I do too.
That way it differs, differentiates the history, you know, the meeting house committee over, so that the meeting house events committee could be created.
Yeah.
You know, if you want to look up the minutes from whatever.
Well, and also. It's, it's what our purpose is, it's what our goal is, is to, is to, you know, bring events in there, you know.
Yeah, I like that too.
I guess, basically, not to keep any, you know, we've been at this for a little bit, so I don't wanna, I don't know if anyone else get to, but. There are some other questions I have, but I think that can be left to, once we have the committee meeting, and the liaison, and so on and so forth back there, because, I mean. Just stuff off the top of my head, something to think about, I mean, if we're gonna hold our own events. Jazz Wednesdays, you know, that means we've got to, of course, promote it, which is not a big deal, but then you have some tickets and online ticketing event, then. There's gonna have to be, you know, bank accounts associated with online tickets, so they can pile up the money that we raised into the, into, into an account. And so there's a whole bunch of stuff that, that will need to be taken care of, once the committee is formed, and stuff like that, so. Just wanting, you know, throw that out there too, because that is a big, a big aspect, and we're not using brown paper ticket. Just like.
Right, okay. Yeah, and that's something.
They've been dark for, they've been dark for fifteen, fifteen months. With people's money.
That, and you're right, that's something, yeah, that's, you know, you certainly would want to.
Yeah, it's, it seems like maybe the inaugural meeting should be, you know, setting that rules and road thing. Maybe their key should be there, you know, kind of. Get the mechanisms discussed and set up.
Right, yeah. No, I think it's, well, I, I really, I thank you Doug, and I applaud you for taking this big step and to, because it is, it's, you know.
Well, I've been a lifelong Williamsville Amherst resident my life, you know. Williamsville, lived in Williamsville up by the main transfer hall until I got married and then. In Amherst ever since, you know, so, you know, I like to see, I just think it's a great. Space, it's a great location, especially with all the new businesses that are coming in, and I just think. Culture, having something there, that's why we decided that from Rocket Horse to start the Theater in the Village, you know, series, and I think this, I think you can take off. That as a backbone, and really start to promote it and get people in there. I'm excited, I really am too. Awesome.
Alright, so, alright, so I think we know what our next steps are. You know, getting something out, I'm sure Kevin and Doug, you'll be exchanging emails.
Yeah, what I'll do is, I'll get to give them something that I'll post on the website.
Okay.
And then in brief, I'll put it on Facebook and link it to the website. That way, you know, people don't, are inundated with information on Facebook, sure.
Do you have my email address, so I can take a look at it before you?
Yeah, absolutely, that's, that's on plan. Actually, don't mind.
Well, I'm gonna give you my personal email, it's D H Kern, K E R N, at Verizon dot net. I'll probably get, I'll probably go get a. MSM account for the meeting house, keep that separate. For now, right to my, my personal account.
So I just sent it, just says hi, so.
Alright, sounds good, I appreciate it.
Well, thanks again. No, I don't have anything else.
Best wishes. And to you on your retirement too, sir, I, I hope you enjoy it and well deserved, and again, thank you for all the help you've given us, and myself especially. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so we'll get right into correspondence, I know Eileen, you had something we're gonna discuss. With regarding Earth Day, you want to talk about that?
Oh.
At some point, we're gonna need to.
We will not, sorry, but is that going to correspondence?
It doesn't need to, it can go under your reports if you.
It doesn't matter, no, we want to bring it up, but it just was an incident that happened, you mean the incident?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was unfortunate. I mean, I can't mention names, because I don't know any names. But during the Earth Day Arbor Day event. It was before the event actually started. The tree board had unfortunately parked the big white truck very close to. The bridge where I had asked the Dare to Repair Cafe people to access to park behind the pavilion. And we originally had planned to have the whole event in Island Park to include the tree board. And after numerous attempts to the tree board via email, I never received a response. So when I arrived at the location, I asked the chairman of the tree board to please move the trees and the truck into Island Park. And it didn't happen, I got there at nine o'clock and nothing was happening, so I went back at nine thirty. There was a sole gentleman standing there, and I said, are the trees gonna be moved into the park? And he started basically reprimanding me, calling me foul names, it was so disgusting. John Nickerson stood next to me and other individuals who are buying at the market. And I was so flattered, so I asked him his name, and he refused to give me his name. And I said that I didn't want him as a volunteer representing the village, and then he should leave. And he refused to leave, and it went on for a while, and John Nickerson finally told him to stop talking that way, and we left. And it was very upsetting to me, so I brought it up briefly with Dan Delano, and. He did finally move the truck, because it was really obstructing the bridge, basically, it should not have been there. And I left it at that, and then I, I met you, but I didn't know what to do after that, I was baffled.
So, and I, I asked Eileen, because I knew we were meeting tonight, because I definitely, you know, needed to have this openly discussed with the board, so everybody was on the same page. And in agreement with what steps or actions, you know, I think we should take. Dave, were you, were you at that event?
Were you, did? Yeah, I briefly left, because Dan and I came in here and made some more copies, but I think I was there for the beginning and the end, and also for the beginning.
Well, he was just standing there alone, when I asked him, I didn't see you.
Okay, well, and as far as the truck goes, just. Point of information, I said to Dan, because I drove the truck. With a hundred and forty sampling, and I said, where do I park? He says, park it by the speed home. That's where it usually has been, so I said, okay, so that's where I parked. And that was, that was a while then. Because I think, I think the truck was fully unloaded by the time the conversation started.
Yeah, well, whatever, well, had Dan answered my numerous emails before the event, I think a lot of this wouldn't have happened. But he, he said, you know, I'm busy, I can't answer emails, well, you can't run a committee. And try to organize an event without answering emails, I can't call people individually, you know, every day and say, this is what we're doing, check your emails. You know, I hate to say it, but had he just corresponded with me about how we're gonna set up the event. A lot of this would have not transpired, honestly. You know, it's unfortunate, I mean, the truck thing, that's not your fault either, it shouldn't have been there, I mean, it was also a hazard, and it was a hazard, it shouldn't have been there. But, you know, it's just the gentleman, the way he responded to me, that's what was upsetting. But, you know, the truck, all that, the trees, I could deal with, it's just the man's behavior was uncalled for.
So, yeah, so I, I was, you know, and certainly, you know, as any volunteer in any capacity, you know, if you're a volunteer for the village of Williamsville. You know, you are obviously representative of the village of Williamsville. And to hear that type of language was used when there were volunteers, families, childrens, and other, you know, volunteer members like Mr. Nickerson around. You know, we do, all of our volunteers do sign a code of ethics. And I definitely think that that has to be a violation of one, if not several of those. And, you know, there is a reorganization meeting coming up July sixth, where we would reappoint or not reappoint or reseat someone on board, so. You know, I just wanted to get every board member's input here on what their thoughts were on that for this individual.
The, the behavior that Adam's talking about really happened, and I'd rather be none of our present the village. Whoever. He or she, it's a he.
He, yeah, trustee, you too?
I, I think we set a fairly strong precedent at the last reorg about. The behavior of volunteers and how they represent the village, and, you know, if we're gonna. If we're gonna hold that line on one conversation, we should be holding that line on every conversation.
Agreed, yes. Okay. Trustee Sherman, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I'm just gonna add, and I'm sort of ducking on what Keaton said a bit ago, I mean, now. The evidence for the public to criticize us or our representatives are. Tenthfold what they used to be, and, you know, I'm just thinking out loud here that luckily somebody who wasn't. Or somebody who was present and heard all of this. They didn't run off to Facebook and say, I just heard this village volunteer tell the trustee, go jump in the lake.
Where's she at, recorded?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's more important than ever to keep it above board.
Okay, well, and I'm in full agreement with all of that, and I, you know, as trustee you pointed out, you know, I think that we sent a very. Good precedent at our last reorganization meeting, when we failed to reappoint an individual. A longstanding individual on a committee, to, back to that committee because of behavior. That was, I'll just say, unbecoming of, you know, a volunteer, so, so I'm gonna just move forward with the reorganization meeting on July sixth. And, you know, motion that we do not reappoint that volunteer to the tree board at that time. Okay, alright. Okay, other correspondence from anyone, I have something, but I'll wait until everyone else does.
I had correspondence, actually, it came via Ben, I'm gonna send a write to traffic and safety. It's about speeding on Re Street.
Okay.
And the condition of Re Street, and Ben said it was gonna be repaved in a year, so I'm just gonna send a write to traffic and safety.
Okay.
Thank you.
Trustee Sherman?
The only correspondence I have relates to the public hearing tonight, so I'll wait and enter it in the record.
Okay, so actually, I, that's my correspondence, but I'm just gonna pass this letter out, because it was a late email letter I received.
Oh, I think that might be the same thing, is it an honest letter?
No, this is from Mr. Patrick Kelly.
Okay.
So I have copies here for everyone, so if you could just kind of maybe look through it before the public hearing. Judy, do you want a copy? So, this pertains to the public hearing as well. Okay, so then, if nobody has any other correspondence, we'll just keep moving along to grants updates.
Actually, Judy, do you want to discuss old days during correspondence, or should we leave that for one of us later on?
Okay.
So Judy and I, and Tony, and Ben, that with. Mr. Gomari from the old home days committee this morning, was a very productive meeting, and actually, just as we were sitting here, Doug Kern was, was in. He sent me an email, kind of addressing all of our questions and reiterating them. So, just to reiterate some of the things that we discussed today. Ben, for your knowledge, the dumpster will be placed behind the bike rack area on the right side after the island enters. A gentleman named Kevin will be on the island on Monday of Old Home Days to advise the DPW guys as to where to put the snow fence. There will be some people in the evening of each night picking up the garbage. And he says, hopefully the DPW guys will need to make a pass through the island for cleanliness on the following morning. Another gentleman named Dan will inform all the vendors and hamer all amusing, you mean, sorry, amusements. That they have their setup done by one PM on Tuesday for inspections, so that Tony can get over there and inspect them for fire extinguishers, et cetera. And one of the main concerns was the bathrooms over there at Island Park. He said that when he orders the portable toilets, two or four of them will be placed in the area of the rest of the building. And then we're gonna lock the restroom during that week.
Right, so, so just so everyone's aware, and I, I talked to Ben, had actually brought this to my attention, and then we conveyed it to Rich. We decided that we're gonna keep the Island Park bathrooms closed for the duration of the event. Just because the taxation of that system with the heavy use of the event. And the, you know, poor water pressure that's already getting onto the island for the bathrooms, and then I believe some of the vendors are also using that. Water pressure tapping into that as well, so it leaves for poor, you know, flushing of the system, and then leads to clogs and a whole other slew of possibilities. So, and Jolly Voice seems to be okay with that, that they're gonna place that, so just to ask why, in case people are, you know, asking about it. It's really just the physical condition of the, the pressure over there in the pipes.
Coincidentally, Ben was over there this morning with a story, so. Kind of odd coincidence there, so the, the idea of why we met was there were, there were a lot of concerns that we had, that we wanted addressed within their plan. Which was submitted to the county as part of their COVID plan. As these restrictions keep loosening, though. Things might change. One of the things that were a little. Little concerned about, and we're not sure how to handle, is Judy and I kind of talked a little bit about this after Rich left, and. They want to prevent access onto the island by having two ticket booths. So that people can gain access to either the beer tents, or the rides, or, or food. Basically, in their idea and their plan, you can't get on the island without buying a ticket.
For ten dollars.
For ten dollars.
Okay.
However, if we are bound by law, really, right?
Can you explain that, just off there, can you, what is that, that we have to, because we've received grant money, correct?
Right.
We have to keep that open, that playground inaccessible to the general public? Okay, so I, I gave this some thought, because I talked to you earlier about it, and I think what we need to do, what the Jolly Voice needs to do, is that. I don't know what that, so I know we as a village didn't have a capacity amount for the island. And my understanding is they reached out to the county, and the county made some mathematical determination based on square footage of the island. Of how many people would be allowed onto the island at one time. My suggestion to take care of that issue, because we do need to leave the playground open, is that I don't know what that number is, do you know what the number is? Of capacity on that island for the event?
So Tony asked the state if he could get one, and because of the only, only having one entrance on there. The state said it would be forty-nine if we went by person capacity.
I'm sorry, forty-nine?
Forty-nine people.
If we go by Golden Code standard.
What?
So the state, the state told Tony that.
Okay, well, then there is no such thing as Old Home Day, because there's way more than forty-nine people.
Right, so in, in.
That's like three families, sorry, you're gonna be out.
In Tony's mind, it was, it was better not to go with that type of capacity.
Okay, so, so then let's go to what the capacity restriction is from the state now for outdoor events, what is that?
So anything, anything above five hundred, you need to split a plan.
Okay, so my suggestion would be then, is let's just say, you know.
They expect about thirteen hundred is what the bridge said.
Okay, but let's just say the number is five hundred, right? Then why can't they just have someone on that bridge? And when 500 bodies walk across, they're at their limit, until so many bodies exit off? Because that way, you're not forcing people who are just coming to use the playground that day to buy a $10 ticket, or forcing those people, even if they don't need to buy a $10 ticket, you know, if they're coming on the island, and they're giving out like a bracelet system to determine who paid attention, who didn't. Let's say I'm there with the kids, and I wanna walk over and grab a funnel cake. And I'm, you know, how do you really track that? So I think the only fair way to do that is whatever their limit, or the guideline limit is, is that's where you're at. You have, you know, then you, then you don't need to do this $10 to get onto the island, because how do you tell someone they can't go and use the playground?
I, I don't understand why it's an issue of population of the island. Like, why can't they just put up snow fencing on the southern edge of the playground and put the ticket booths in the park?
Well, I don't know. You said possible to do that?
I, I thought about that earlier, but then you're, you're, you're keeping the playground separate.
That's the idea.
Nothing, nothing, I mean, coming out.
That's the idea. Well, is that though considered capacity? Uh, uh, I guess that's the question. Is that considered capacity, the people who are on the playground? As part of the, the overall, uh, yeah.
Yeah, that's another question.
Yeah, it has to be part of it, because they kept saying, once we hit 70%, everything's gonna be lifted.
Right, this whole conversation.
We hit 70% today, so we'll see what he says tomorrow.
Mm-hmm, right.
Or Friday.
Right.
You said that they, that, that the Old Home Day Committee, if they have some kind of a plan, they could go over 500? Yeah, this is a part of, all part of the plan that, uh, he discussed with us today. So, yeah, we had a lot of questions after they submitted the plan with the county and copied us on it. They also copied the town. Um, the town comes in in several places, including the ticket booth system, because the ticket booths are outside the island.
Yeah.
Uh, on the other side of the bridge.
Which is town property.
Town property, so they need to inform the town. But, uh, yeah, anyway, the, uh, the committee went ahead, and they submitted the plan. And, um, we, we had a lot of concerns that Rich was able to address, but this was the one that we couldn't quite figure out the best way to tackle.
Well, I think trustee two brought up a good way. He said about the snow fencing. Or you have to just do counts of what I suggested, and then how many people are on.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I don't anticipate there being a huge group of people, quite frankly, just coming for the playground, because it's so enticing as a parent of young children then, for you to bring them on there and say, "Oh, we're not gonna do that," and then you see the rise. You know, I mean, so I, I don't anticipate that being a huge portion of count on the island. So that may just be simpler than having to snow fence it. And then you're, you know, I, I don't know, just a little bit more family-friendly then, too.
Yeah, you know, and people wanna carve access for people. Um, I mean, the, other than just the playground, people can just go walk around the island park.
Keen, what does a $10 ticket get you?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Maybe, maybe, and he first, he said $10.
At least get me a funnel cake.
And then he said, then he said, $10 might get you a beer.
Okay, trustee Tori, at least gets a funnel cake. And I want one, too. I think all the action gets a funnel cake.
But his comment was, that would, that would prevent, like, your teenagers from just coming on and, and hanging out on the island for no reason. It's kind of true.
The idea of the beers itself is just kind of an extra. Their idea is to really sell as many tickets, tickets as possible online.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, it's just for those who haven't done it online, you know? There's no permission. Uh, oh, yeah, exactly. It all may be moot, and, um, like I said, you know, it, it's not just the playground, you just can't restrict access overall. People might wanna go look at the other side of the creek. You know, we can't just.
You open up the state fair to everyone, 100% of it. So.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's, I think we had some good discussion tonight.
Maybe we just monitor the situation.
Yeah, let's just see where we're at, because we've got another meeting at the end of this month, but.
In a few days, I might be sending an email that says, "Hooray, everything's fine," so.
Okay.
This is just kind of briefing you.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Very good, very. Um, do you wanna go into grants updates, then?
Oh, sure, yes. Uh, that's also me. Hold on one second. So as I, uh, as I mentioned last week, and thank you everybody for paying attention to those emails, there's a lot, uh, that came about. Um, so, a- as everyone is aware, the board, and, uh, Ben, too, um, we submitted, uh, our ideas to our grant writers about, uh, four grant applications. Uh, one is the Greenway Main Street recreational trail project, which, uh, is really led by Matt. He's, uh, put a lot of information together already. So, thank you for doing that. Uh, we have our ongoing sewer improvement project, our comprehensive plan update, and a study for the Elder Creek Dam uh, through a local waterfront revitalization project. So, um, everything was sent over to Bernie and Anthony on, uh, Friday. And, uh, I'm sorry, by Thursday afternoon. And on Friday, I actually received, um, an email from Anthony, and he's already getting to work. Um, he's always already asking us for documents and materials. So, um, we are, we are on our way. Uh, as I mentioned in one of the emails, the Department of State's, I'm sorry, Department of Transportation's, um, sidewalk grant should also still be out in July.
Great.
So.
That's great.
Yeah, now it's just a, uh, work hard and then wait and see what happens.
Hurry up and wait, yeah. Okay, good, good. All right, thank you. Uh, agenda review, and trustee Tori, I know you're gonna go off agenda tonight for, yes? So, just to cut right, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, uh, we'll get right into board reports. South Cayuga Road drainage. Um, Keen, can you put that picture up that I sent you through? So, Ben, I'm gonna rely on you a lot for this discussion and explanation to the board.
Sure.
Okay. So, I'm just gonna, I sent Keen the picture of flooding that was, I believe it was May 21st. What was the date on that? I sent you, I think.
I think it was March.
Uh, March, March, okay.
Yeah, it was, uh, unringed, and it came through on a Friday morning.
So, so, um, so this is typical what, um, that South Cayuga looks like on any given amount of rain. It just doesn't drain, and, um, it seems to have gotten worse over the years. Um, you know, certainly since I've been on the street. So, Ben, can you just kind of walk everybody through what you and your crew have tried to do to get this taken care of, and then kind of our talk about the injection wells on the street?
Okay, um, clearly, the street floods perennially when it rains. The pipe was plugged. We utilized sewer jet and root cutting method to try to clear that pipe from the road all the way to the creek. Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, no, we can hear you. Just back the truck up for a second. Uh, just to be, so everyone knows, the pipe you're referring to is the singular one and only pipe that is responsible for the entire length of South Cayuga.
From about California to Milton, yes.
Yeah, and it's an eight-inch pipe.
No, 12.
12-inch pipe runs from the street along, uh, essentially along the property line.
Yeah.
To the creek.
Right.
Yes.
And.
It was 500 feet long.
500 feet long, and the, and the, where it outlets into the creek is below the high water line.
Oh. Um, no, we don't necessarily know that yet, because we haven't actually opened the end up yet.
Okay.
So, I, I don't know that I can say that definitively.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So, we, we utilized a root cut and sewer jet method, whereas we did a majority of the work from the street. Um, pulled out, uh, many tons of material from that pipe. It was completely plugged with roots and soil, and just over time, that happens. Uh, I know that about 12 years ago, uh, the, the DPW did attempt to, to clean it. At that time, they got stuck about 100 so feet back, and had to go into the backyard and dig up and make a replacement of some pipe. We saw that, uh, via our cameraing, uh, that we did. Um, because of the condition and the amount of material in the pipe, we had a lot of trouble getting our underground cameras through the whole thing. So at one point, we had to open it up. Um, this was explained to the resident. Uh, we, Shira, you know, we, we opened the pipe up so that we could see where we were at about 300 feet back. Were able to continue to clean it. Um, and then at a point, we couldn't get any farther, we started to come from the creek towards the street, and utilizing information that we had off of, uh, the county's stormwater coalition, uh, they, they identified an outlet we thought was the outlet. We started to you, walk, walk that pipe back, replacing it in kind. And at, in that area, there, the pipe does not run straight. The, the pipe runs at a curve around some trees and various angles, so it frankly is very difficult to identify exactly what was happening um, without doing a whole lot of, uh, excavation and disturbance. Um, we, we took the pipe that we found, which was a 10-inch, um, octagonal clay pipe that was pieced together, and traced that back for a little bit. And then it became clear that that, that was not the correct alignment. Uh, we had to move over a little bit and did some more investigative digging, found the original, the 12-inch pipe that actually runs from Cayuga back, uh, was it, we're able to ascertain exactly its location with the use of, um, underground cameras and locating technology that we couldn't have done from 400 feet away. It had to be done, you know, within 100 feet of where we pushed the camera through the pipe. Uh, that's when we determined that, that we, we learned that the pipe dead ends behind the stone wall on the creek. Uh, this was the holiday weekend, and with the threat of an inch of rain coming, uh, I made the decision to put in a diversion, so that the pipe that we had just cleaned would have a place to drain directly to the creek, other than in, uh, the resident's backyard of 136. Um, at that point, they became, uh, they requested that we start to get out of there, get our equipment out, so we closed everything up, not to leave any open holes. Um, so there is a diversion in the end of the pipe, that's a 10-inch off of the 12-inch that goes in the creek. So there is some positive drainage now, which is why we haven't seen any ponding lately. But the end of that pipe still remains obstructed by the wall at the, uh, end, uh, right by the, that old rock shed, if anyone is familiar with it, at the very end of the island, the very tip. So I don't know if I made that clear. A lot, a lot went on uh, over the course of several weeks. It was not easy work. Um, but I believe that we did the best that we could under the circumstances to not tear up 500 feet of property and trees, and the garage that is over the pipe, and so on and so forth. So here we sit right now. Um, but there's another question of the easement. I think that you have all been briefed on that in previous, uh, board meetings, that we don't have an easement on this property. There was an effort at one point about, oh, was it 10 years ago? Uh, to get an easement that was never signed. The property was sold. The current owners, uh, apparently had no knowledge of the pipe under their property. Uh, although it does, their garage drains into that pipe directly. We saw those connections via the camera. Um, so what, what we have here is a, you know, kind of an underground mess. Uh, that, that needs to be yet resolved. And that resolution, in my mind, is to open the end of the 12-inch pipe, so that we have that proper drainage, um, disconnect the bypass, the temporary relief, and then look into other engineering solutions to minimize the flow to that pipe, because it's ultimately undersized, um, for the drainage area that it takes. That's the synopsis as best as I can provide you right now. Uh, you can.
The, the only thing.
What else?
The only thing I wanna add is to qualify what Ben's saying about that we don't have an easement. There is no recorded easement. There was an easement that was drafted back in more like 15 years ago, uh, I believe. And at that time, you know, presumably drafted by the, whoever the village attorney was then, and, and former village, uh, clerk administrator was communicating with the then-property owner, and just for whatever reason, it never got signed, and therefore, it never got recorded. However, this pipe has been there for many, many decades. And so I believe that the village has likely an easement by prescription, uh, meaning even though it's not written down, it's been used in an open and notorious fashion for more than 10 years, and therefore, the law will recognize that. However, that's something, frankly, we'd really need a court to rule on. Um, and right now, the property owners are taking the position, despite the fact, I think, that Ben explained what he just explained to you all, the property owners pretty clearly, are taking the position that the problem's unsolved, so you can't come back on our property. So, I've had some discussions with their attorney now, and so I, I'm also doing a little bit of more research on their, uh, on exactly what their property boundaries are, because their deed is a little funky, um, in terms of its description of the boundaries. Uh, but, so I, I, I do think that ultimately we do have the right to go in there and fix this problem, but without having a recorded easement, and without having the property owners allowing us to go on the property, you know, it could, you know, we might have to go into court, which would be unfortunate way to resolve this problem. And to, to Ben's point, the other is, is, is this a long-term solution for this problem? Is that, is a 500-foot 12-inch pipe across private property the best way to drain the street? I, I can't answer that question. I don't have an opinion on that. But right now, that's probably stuck in terms of fixing this last bit of this. What's that?
I thought I'm gonna go with what the civil engineer on the board said, and it doesn't, it's the right way. But, so, so to that end, and I, we're getting, getting ready for the board meeting. But Ben, can you just talk a little bit about, um, that proposal that you got from SHUT engineers? And I know they looked at, I have it in front of me, about some fees. So what would we be looking at costs of those injection wells to solve this issue? And then to provide the adequate drainage for the street?
Well, we, we can't do anything until we know how much water the rock is gonna take. And that's gonna be about a $10,000 well on top of maybe a $5,000 catch basin and, and our, uh, work to cut the road and install it. So that's 15 for the well, and then the engineering is to basically tell us then how much, how many of those wells we need to install. Matt, you know, I, is $8,000 to do a, a drainage study reasonable? Could we do this, could we do this by the guess and check method, and just start putting wells in?
Well, I mean, sure.
Uh, that's, I, obviously not ideal, uh, but at some point, we have to take the first step to get the well in. And maybe it, maybe it takes two gallons a minute, maybe it takes 1,000. We don't know yet.
So, so the, basically, if you, if you assume for a second that the, the drainage area that's tributary to this one pipe is gonna now be tributary to these injection wells. You're talking about something on the order of 15 acres of property. Um, and, you know, as you all know, Cayuga's kind of a bowl, right? And you gotta, you can go down, come back up. But it's all generally going towards the creek as well, once you get up over that sidewalk. So there's a, so we're really only talking about draining the street itself, as well as primarily the properties on the west side, which would be draining towards the street.
Correct.
But one would need to evaluate what that load is. And then these injection wells, I mean, basically what they are, is they're a big hole in the ground that dumps the water into the bedrock instead of taking it to the creek. Those have limits, usually about 400 gallons, you know, a minute or whatever it is. And, you know, really, really, really rough numbers, you could be talking, you're not talking two, you could be talking 10, right? So at 15 grand a pop, you could be talking a substantial thing doing this, like, just eyeballing it, right? Or you could put in one, and then that doesn't work out, so well, then you put in another one, and it doesn't work out, then you put in another one, it's like we keep paying mobilization costs, right?
And it may never work.
Yeah, if the engineering comes back, it's, you know, at $8,000, it's, it's only two man weeks worth of work, really. And they, they come back and they say, "Okay, you can do this with five and a couple of equalization pipes." Now you've got a real plan with a real budget, with a real, you know. Now you've got a real plan with a real budget, with a real, you know, based on real fact. And if we can't afford to do it this year, we can also seek grants for that stuff too, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and if it is in some way connected with a green infrastructure project, you know, look, look a little bit bigger. Yeah, we could get funding.
Right, so I mean, you know, personally, I mean, I know, I, I guess I would be, you could argue that I'm biased in this estimation, but. Um, but paying for consultant services for a plan that you know is gonna work is worth every penny.
Amen.
Yeah.
I would prefer to do that, so can we, can I give him authorization?
But, but just a question. Um, did you say that twelve inch pipe is or is not functioning now?
It's functioning all the way up to three feet from the edge of the wall, we were able to camera, and there is a pretty substantial. Root and rock obstruction. It does appear that the wall was repaired in recent time, there is a different colored mortar and. You know, if you, if you kind of line up the pieces, it looks like they took pieces from higher up on the wall and shoved them into what they may have perceived as a hole. I'm, I'm only speculating, you know, the previous owner said, oh my gosh, look at this wall, there's a big hole in it, let's patch it up, we're gonna sell. And that's why the owners now don't know that there was a pipe there.
So we have a legal way of just to, just to really open this whole thing up anyway.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
I mean, so right now we have a bandage.
Yeah, exactly.
Unless you can convince, unless we can convince them to. You know, move off, but frankly, I think so, you know. I, 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 I understand to some extent their frustration because this project sort of probably.
It took a long time.
Yeah, and it, it ballooned larger than they anticipated, but, but, but right now, I, you know, honestly, I just, I don't. You know, they're. They're, they're allowing their frustration to, to take. To, to lead them to take a pretty unreasonable position at this point, but.
And I would, I would also remind them that they are directly contributing to this pipe via the connections of their garage, which we cannot find a permit for.
Right.
Would that, on a side note, that, that should be remedied?
Well, how do I remedy that? Can we do that?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I mean, what, if we found out, I mean, assuming. Uh, that requires a permit, I mean, I.
Sure, any connection to the village storm waters.
Yeah, that's right, that's true, right. So although, you know, before I give a definitive answer, I'd wanna go back and take a look, go make sure there's no grandfathering language in there, I suppose, but.
Right.
Um. But, but yeah, I, if we didn't know about it, if we discovered it, we're not stopped from, from. You know, enforcing that, but, but this is the, the question, I mean. I'm not, you know, we can, we can fight with them if it's necessary, and I think it's unfortunate that we'd be in that sort of situation, right? And, and especially, and especially though, but if we don't think this is a long-term solution. Anyway, you know, that, that's why I just think we need to make a decision as to, you know, I mean, if we have to go into court, that's gonna cost money too. Um. So. You, you know, we just need to decide how we wanna proceed with this thing, I mean, if we think there's a better engineered solution. Um, I still think we have to deal with the, the temporary fix that we have right now, because frankly, it's now involved two properties. Um, so, you know, we'll have to figure that out, but. Like, Matt, what do you think, or Ben, you know, like, what sort of time, I mean, I assume to do the engineering to do, I mean, we're talking. You know. This solution should not be installed for quite some time.
Well, so the, so it's sort of a, a twofold thing, so there's the, there's the. The test well and the engineering associated with that, and, you know, depending on mobilization and whatever else, let's say that. That effort took six weeks.
Yeah, two months, I'd give it, yep.
Yeah, um, then by the end of that two months, we would know. What we're up against, and the permanent solution that would come out of that effort. That could potentially take a year or two to see materialize. So in the short term, then after say two months, we would have a five hundred foot long pipe. And a deep well.
Yeah.
And as a relief overflow for the drainage on Kayuga. The fact that we've cleaned out this pipe, that water flows through it, that it actually has a daylight in the creek. All of those are vast improvements over its condition from several weeks ago. So it will, I mean, it has historically performed when it's been in decent condition, shockingly. Um, and as long as it remains in decent condition, would continue to perform and would be a decent stopgap. Until we could do something better and more permanent.
I, I have another question anyway, Chip, um, how difficult does it to get an injunction to prevent that property owner? From preventing us, uh, going on the property?
Oh, I mean, that, that's exactly what we'd have to do, we'd have to go into court on a expedite, you know, we'd have to seek a preliminary injunction. Um, the, the, the burden to get a preliminary injunction is always greater when you're seeking affirmative relief. Than if you're trying to maintain the status quo and we're not, you know, we'd be seeking affirmative relief. I'm not saying we don't have a good case, I'm not saying that at all, but I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's no guarantee. Uh, we'd be granted a preliminary injunction. Um, if the court thought that there, you know, we didn't have a, make a clear and convincing case that we had the right to do that. Um, it's possible that we then could have to, you know, then that could drag on for a while. Um.
Okay, so, um, I do wanna, I, I think we have some more discussion on this topic, but I'm looking at the time, it is seven thirty-five. And I, we do have some guests here this evening, so I wanna get our regular board meeting started. Uh, is there anyone who needs a break, or can we kind of jump into it and take a break, maybe after a couple of hearings? So, okay, all right, so, uh, welcome everyone, uh, welcome to our Village Williamsville Board Meeting for June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. And we'll begin with, um, the Pledge of Allegiance. And I just wanted to note before we start that today is Flag Day, and. I hope that everybody takes note of that, and then perhaps you're even flying a flag at your home, which is great. So we'll leave with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Piazza.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Administrator Kindred, would you do the vocal call, please?
Yes.
Here.
Trustee Ete.
Here.
Trustee Tori.
Here.
Trustee Sherman.
Here. Sorry, I'm here, sorry, couldn't find my mute, unmute button.
Present.
Here.
Hey, thank you, we have no proclamations this evening, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
All in favor? Okay, so this evening we have one public hearing, uh, which is a continuation of the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Public hearing on the proposed revision of chapter twelve, fifteen and eighteen regarding the building code. So at this time. There's somebody. Okay, you're good, okay. Um, so at this time, um, I will, I will shortly make a motion to open the public hearing. So if you're here to speak on this particular issue, we ask that you come up here and speak into the mic and state your name and the address for our record. And at this time, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the continuation of the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one public hearing. On the proposed revisions of chapters twelve, fifteen and eighteen per the building code.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And, uh, Ms. Mayor, can, um, can I, uh, say a few words before we?
Oh, yes, because you had some correspondence, and thank you for reminding me, because I have some correspondence as well that I'd like to share before, go ahead.
So, uh, just a couple of things, uh, for everyone who's here and who's online, um. I, I wanted to share a couple of thoughts that were, um, one is. Um, if anyone read the Amherst B article that summarized the last meeting. Um, I cannot say clearly enough that it wildly mischaracterized the conversation. It muddied the, uh, specifics of the topic and misrepresented. Uh, pretty much. Every specific detail associated with why we're here and what we're talking about, so. If, if anyone has, uh, questions or concerns related to how it was represented in the Amherst B, please know that. It is just completely inaccurate. Uh, second statement, uh, there is a letter that was received, uh, that was forwarded to me. It was not signed, but it, uh, apparently may have been addressed to everyone. Whose properties, um. Are in the historic resource survey. And I wanted to read it and then, um. Offer some clarity and some, uh. Uh, follow-up statements on it. So I'm sending you this letter because like me, you have been notified of potential changes to the Village Williamsville code that will directly affect our properties. If you are like me, you were just, you just recently learned that your property is listed on a twenty-four-year-old survey. Which identifies our properties as a potential historic resource. The proposed change means that any property on this survey would have to go through additional oversight for demolition. Of any portion of our properties, not even necessarily the whole building, chimney, fence, wall, et cetera. If this is passed, you will have to submit your normal permit to the building department, then have a group of volunteers on a committee. Make the final determination as to how you maintain your property. So additional hoops and more delays that the Amherst property owner does not have to go through. This also may just be the first step towards greater and more broad control over your property. If no one objects and this is passed easily, where does it end? The next thing they'll try is building permits and so on and so on, until they have eroded our property rights. I'm quite certain that you'd probably rather make changes to your property based on your own style, budget and needs, not theirs. Simply because somewhere, somehow, someone has assigned additional historic architectural or other value to your property. That other property owners do not have to contend with. My understanding is that only one person was at the meeting to object, that was apparently made out to be shown as a point of general ambivalence regarding these changes. Never mind the fact that the letters were received one to two days before the meeting. That clearly signals that people pushing this change didn't want the affected owners to show up and object. People pushing these changes have their own agenda, which is more than likely contrary to what is your best interest. You don't need to believe me, I asked you to read the code. And they cite the, the historic landmark standards, so. That whole first paragraph, um, wildly, wildly mischaracterizes the entire conversation. Uh, first and foremost, uh, yes, the survey is twenty-four years old, that doesn't make it illegitimate. It just means that that's when it was done. Secondly, uh, there are not necessarily any additional hoops that any property owner would have to jump through. And in fact, the current demolition code that is in, that is currently on the books today. It would apply, this process applies to literally any property fifty years or older, and. To be clear, what the process we're talking about is not historic designation. It is not even a small group of village volunteers who would have a determination on whether or not you can, or how you maintain your property. It would not be asking them whether or not you're allowed to demo your building. What it is. Is a referral process. That is permissible under New York State law right now, as it stands. And only starts that conversation earlier rather than later. The Historic Preservation Commission. Theoretically. Right now, could nominate. Every property. In the reconnaissance level survey that was done twenty-four years ago. They very likely. Would not succeed in landmark status. For, I would say, say, say a lion's share of those. It has also been shown that just because those properties were identified twenty-four years ago. As being potentially significant, and potential being the significant word. Um, does not necessarily mean that they are in fact actually significant. Um, it is entirely likely that a, some percentage of those properties that are listed are in fact not as significant as. Maybe possible. Hence why there were additional surveys done, like the intensive level survey for St. Kayuga, for example. Where in a much more thorough process of vetting those properties was executed. That does not preclude the HPC from making a nomination on any of those properties. They could do that right now, they theoretically could have been doing that every day for the last twenty-four years, and they haven't. Because more in-depth research would be required to justify that nomination. This as part strictly. Of the suggestion to demolish a structure. Structure being now defined as a wall or a house or a garage or whatever might be considered. You know, structural. That they get one last chance. This is it, this is their last opportunity, they have twenty-four years to nominate this thing, and they haven't acted. This is the last opportunity to act. If they choose not to act. That's it, it's over, it's done, property mover, property owner moves on. The flip side to this approach is. But the building department doesn't notify the HPC. And it is one of those items that actually, you know, we do actually see value in that. And we wanted to do that, we just hadn't gotten around to it yet. And now. The bulldozer's showing up, and they're hastily nominating and putting a stop to your permit and to your project. Which can happen. That is New York State law, that's not village law, that's historic preservation law. So wouldn't it be better? To have that conversation? When you make your application? And give them the opportunity to say, we're good. Or. Wait until the, the wrecking ball shows up. And they hastily nominate and put a stop to it. For an indefinite period of time. This scenario, the latter scenario, is not without precedent, it has occurred, it has created quite a bit of strife. It has created quite a bit of anxiety and unnecessary unpleasantness. On the flip side. If you go in and you're looking to build a building on your property, let's say you wanna build a shed. You wanna put it closer to your property line than you have to, you have to go to the ZBA to get a variance for that. Now. The way the law is written today, the way it is on the books in the village today, in the demolition code. Is that literally any property in the village fifty years or older, which I mean, how many aren't? Could follow this process, does follow this process. The question is. How many properties are legitimately? Potentially significant, and how many are just old? So if all twenty-five hundred properties are up for grabs at fifty years old for, for significance. And every single person who owns one of those properties comes up and says, I wanna demolish my house, it's over fifty years old. It goes to HPC, they say, you know what, no thanks, and you know how they're gonna make that determination? They're gonna make that determination based on the twenty-four-year-old survey. Now, on the flip side of that. If you live, if you own a property that isn't on that survey, the building department can issue you your permit right away. Done. If you do own that property, nothing changes for you, there's still the question of whether or not that property will be designated, would be pursued. For designation. Now, to be very, very, very clear. Just because HPC nominates something does not mean it is designated. It is the beginning of a process that takes two public hearings, one of which is before this board. And. Generally, in the last handful of years, residential properties have not really won designation. From this board, that doesn't mean that that's going to move forward that way. These, this board turns over over time. But. It generally speaking. The, the local landmark designations in the village are, tend to be commercial. And. The HPC has not been aggressively pursuing residential designations. Now. In another, further in this email, I won't read the rest of it, and in another letter that we received. A lot of discussion goes into talking about what the, what happens. Should a property be designated? As if there's a slippery slope. As if there's a slippery slope, their words, where this referral process to the HPC suddenly begets design standards on your property. It's not true. The design standards that are encoded right now in the village are for designated properties. Oh, this referral does not create a designation, it creates a conversation. That conversation might end with, no, we're good, thanks, that's not, that's, property is not significant. And we're not interested in pursuing it. And you move on. Or it might be, you know what, that one, that old house on North Ellicott, that's been there since 1880, we really wouldn't want to lose that in village character, and yes, we would be interested in pursuing designation on that. Until this board votes in the affirmative that that designation should move forward as a landmark. Then and only then would historic landmark standards come into play. Then and only then would issues of repair and maintenance versus additions and renovations start to be parsed out as to whether or not one would need, you know, HPC involvement. Now, one of the big things that came out of the conversation about the South Cayuga Historic District proposal was that our design guidelines, as they sit right now, were crafted specifically with commercial properties in mind. Conversations about color, materials, things of this nature, were all generally crafted with commercial properties in mind, very similar to the design guidelines for our mixed use districts and things. Because of my earlier statement, for the vast majority of our landmarks are commercial. The HPC unanimously agrees that our design guidelines are not crafted to reflect what they would deem their priorities with regards to residential properties. And an effort has begun to alter those guidelines as well. That being said, none of that matters with regards to this code revision. None of it, it's not, doesn't enter the conversation. Because none of it happens, and none of it is triggered unless, A, you want to demolish something, and B, that's considered a structure, and B, you get through two public hearings and a nomination process to get there. So there's a lot of hoops that potentially get jumped through before conversations about color and types of roofing materials are even discussed. So the only question on the table today, as far as this code change is concerned, is whether or not we do an initial sift, and we say 100% unilaterally, all properties are 50 years older? Or we narrow the aperture to those properties that are specifically identified as potentially significant? And then, and only then does HPC say, yes, or no, we're interested in nominating them. But they have a timeline, they have 30 days. Now, a discussion last time was, is it 45 days? I would offer that it should be 45 days for their next scheduled meeting, whichever comes first.
I agree.
And that is intended to expedite this process, because it wouldn't last longer than a month theoretically. And again, it's a put up or shut up moment, where it's like you've had two and a half decades. This is your last month to consider this. And once it's done, it's done. So it's, it's, it's meant to be sort of difficult for both parties, specifically to create that conversation and then resolve the issue. Otherwise, these things linger. So I hope that addresses the first letter's comments, it generally addresses the second letter's comments. Now I'm happy to open it up and listen to it.
Matt, Matt.
Yeah.
Matt, so I, I just want to address one other thing that I heard. I haven't seen or read this letter, but I heard you read it. Um, so I, but if I heard it correctly, I think the, the writer was sort of the slippery slope argument or assertion was that, you know, starting with concern about the property might get designated as a historic landmark, and what's next is you may need building permits. You know, I just want, for anybody who's listening for this or following this public hearing, that most work, whether your property is a historic landmark or not, you need a building permit for much of the work that you're, any building in the Village of Williamsville, and then any other municipality in New York, if it has to conform to the Uniform Building Code, which is a lot of work that people have to do on their homes. Now, there is work and improvements people can do to their homes in the Village of Williamsville that don't require a building permit, but I just want to make sure people understand that.
And this, this code doesn't change any of the existing
No, no, right.
Any permits that are required. So for example, like getting new siding on your house doesn't require a permit. Just go and do it, doesn't change anything. Getting new shingles on your roof doesn't change anything. Getting new windows doesn't require a permit, oddly enough, though, should. But none of those activities, not a single one of them, even getting an addition on your house, spanning vertically three stories, whatever you want to do, none of that triggers anything related to historic preservation. The one and only permit that could potentially be sought, that would trigger this referral process at all, is if you wanted to tear down your house. And only those properties that are identified as potentially significant. Since this conversation started three weeks ago, again, several property owners have reached out to me and have exceedingly good justification for why their property is just nice looking and not historic. And that would go a very long way towards ending the conversation, right then and there. One had photographs of what the house used to look like, and it was not even remotely close to what was, made it potentially significant. So all they would have to do is submit that and say, look, this is not why it's, this is not what it's supposed to be, it's not what it was recommended to be. HPC looks at it and says, yeah, you're right, there's nothing here. Done.
Okay. So I just, I just want to clarify two things that you commented on, because you commented a couple of times on them. The first thing is, is that I, I read that, when you were reading that letter, when I'm hearing that for the first time, I see that residence made concern as this being what I'm going to refer to as a gateway law. You know, you know, we've all heard the term gateway drugs, I'm going to call this a gateway law. Because I think that that's where the terminology slippery slope comes in. Because, you know, we're opening other floodgates for this one oversight, an additional layer of government oversight by a group of volunteers. And so that, that's kind of where I was seeing maybe the jux of that letter. And the other thing that you referenced was that, you know, since you've been on the board, and certainly since I've been on the board, there have been nominations for private property owners to, that have come to us from HPC, and then this board gets the final say on it. And, and yes, you know, luckily enough for, for those residents who have opposed, you know, for the most recent example was the Wall and Garrison. And there were three members on this board who voted alongside the resident, so that landmark was not given on that property. And so we were essentially, three of us were listening to the resident, and two of us were not. So, but that's not to say, I mean, we do have a village election, as a matter of fact, tomorrow. This board can change at any given time, because people come and go, they, they move out of state. Trustee Gates just moved to Ohio, which then had myself appointing trustee Sherman to fill the position. So this board can quite frankly change, you know, with the blow of a wind. So I, I just don't want anyone who's hearing your statements about, yes, historically, we've had predominantly a board that listens to the resident's wills, but you know, of course, that is open to interpretation based on who is sitting in these five seats.
Oh, I, I agree, 100%, I, I, yeah, I don't want to miss.
I, I just don't want to put it as like a guarantee, like, yes, you know, it has been, that has been the streak as of late, but as we see, you know, times and people change and boards change and, you know, so, okay, so I.
So, so, well, so to that point, just quickly, so the first comment was the slippery slope.
Yeah.
So to be, again, to sort of to reiterate, we're not creating, we're not creating a ladder to a slide that doesn't exist. That slippery slope exists right now. The second that that reconnaissance level survey was printed in 1997, the HPC could have immediately begun intensive level surveys and subsequent nominations of any and all of those properties for the last two and a half decades.
Right, but most people, to that point, most people quite honestly didn't know about that, because houses have transferred and new people have moved in.
Look, I was, I was in college when that thing was written, so like, I can't, you know, but, but the point is, is that like, that doesn't, that doesn't change the fact that the process and the potential for nomination of any one of those properties exists. Whether people are aware of it or not, doesn't make that irrelevant, doesn't make that process not exist. This law does not change that process, it doesn't encourage that process, it doesn't open up the floodgates to that process, use whatever euphemism you want. The only thing it does is trigger one last opportunity to engage in that process if and when that property owner proposes to demolish what is potentially considered a historic resource, potentially. It may be proven otherwise, right?
But in fact, it does open up the floodgates, because if you look at the way the previous, if this, you know, if this code were never rewritten, and I understand why we're doing it to try to make our code easier for people to understand and read, but that, that particular sentence of glomming on and grabbing those properties that were identified in those surveys were, that was, that was not on the forefront, in my recollection, of what the current demo code was. And in fact, when I talked to our code enforcement officer, Tim Masters, about that, he brought up that it was brought by you to that meeting when you met with attorney Greco and Mr. Masters, that you wanted that in there. So, so to me, it is bringing it more to the forefront.
But, but it's doing so in a way that is meant to streamline the process for everyone involved, okay? Because right now, the way the code is written, if an application for demolition relates to a building or structure that is 50 years or older, code enforcement should refer that application to historic preservation before making a decision. That's what our code says today, right? Right? The only thing we've done is narrow the focus, so that it's not every property, it's only the properties that would already have been considered significant, potentially even worth discussing as significant, right? So for our building department, if you come in to apply for a permit for demolition, and Tim opens up the reconnaissance level survey and checks your address, and you're not on it, he hands you your permit. Right? Otherwise, the way it's written right now, literally every applicant, every single one, for every property in the village, is said, we'll get back to you, and that referral is supposed to go to HPC, every single time. Now, if we're, if we're interested in delaying every application for the purposes of equanimity, fine, then we'll leave it the way it is. But that seems unnecessarily burdensome to literally every potential applicant.
Well, I disagree with that, because I mean, quite honestly, you know, how many demolitions do we have in any given year here?
Not many.
Well, so then why would, how would that overburden HPC? I mean, that committee meets once a month.
I didn't say it would overburden HPC, I said it would overburden the applicant.
It won't, because if we're putting in a 30 days, HPC has 30 days to rule on it. Basically, what it is, is the entire village is considered historic by means of the demo code. So if you live in the village and your house is more than 50 years old, you will no longer be able to go to the building department window and get a building demo permit through our code enforcement officer. Your application will need to be referred through HPC. And I don't really see, you know, it's not going to be a backlog, but I, I think it is equal. I mean, I think when you're targeting a certain percentage of homeowners, whether that be 5% or, you know, whatever the percentage of homeowners are that receive that letter, I, I find that like from a government side unfair, that we're separating these individuals, because somebody at the whim of a volunteer who sat on this committee 24 years ago, when they were doing this survey, and houses have changed in 24 years, and, you know, but sorry, you're listening.
Volunteer, it was a professional architect.
Well, it was, I'm sorry, it was a whim of the volunteers to do it, or to do, for example, the South Cayuga Historic District. I mean, you know, that was, well, I mean, but, you know, that was to segue off, you know, some development that was potentially feared on the street. So I just, I just want to be fair to everyone, you know, when I sit up here, you know, and, and earlier today, we were talking about the volunteer, you know, and I, you know, if you disagree with me, trustee Tori, you can certainly speak up. But when we were talking about the volunteer situation, where we didn't reappoint a certain volunteer to the Historic Preservation Commission at our last reorganization meeting, because of her bully-ish bullying behavior towards one of our employees. And then we had an issue come up two weeks ago in an Arbor Day celebration here that was similar in nature, because I'm going to call it a violation of code of ethics and bully-ish behavior. So what I'm saying is, you know, as board members, you know, I'm trying to look at this fairly, and I'm just really having a hard time where we are separating a segment of our residents, and we are holding them to a different standard than any other resident who walks up to that window out there. And I just want to know, like, why? And, and quite honestly, you know, 24 years, you mean to tell me in 24 years, if these homes that were paid, I might add, by grant money, to have this survey done in 24 years' time? So we felt it was important enough to spend this, this grant money that we received from New York State to do these surveys, but, oh, you know what, we thought, we got all the information here pretty much, and it's just up for us to take it over to the finish line. I mean, in 24 years, they couldn't even nominate like one or 10? I mean, out of all the.
They nominated the entire district.
Well, okay, but, you know, that obviously, right, fell short because of the board that was sitting here. Otherwise, that would have been nominated, and South Cayuga would be a historic district as we speak. But I'm just saying, I, I would just like to see everybody, you know, the code, the village code is here to govern us as a village. And whether you live on South Cayuga, North Ellicott, Pasadena, it shouldn't matter. That code should be the same for everyone reading it. There shouldn't, that's, that's all I'm suggesting here, and I think.
But that's, that, that, that sounds great, but when you look over at the map on the wall, you can see, you know, that what applies in one neighborhood doesn't apply in a number.
I understand that, but if I.
Nature of ordinance.
Yeah, but okay, but if I'm in an R2 district and the street behind me is in an R2, why shouldn't they have to go through the same loop I have to, because we're all in R2s? So I'm not talking about R2, R3, MU, I'm talking about just a regular neighborhood, you know, Full Place. The gentleman who was here two, two weeks ago has a house on Full Place. I, I, to my knowledge, it isn't all the Full Place that's been listed in the survey, it's a few, few homes. So like, why should his house be treated to any, any differently than his neighbors two doors down perhaps isn't listed? That's all I'm at, I'm just asking a question here tonight, I'm not trying to be antagonistic. I'm just trying to be fair and ask those difficult questions that nobody seems to want to answer.
Well, I think the problem is, there is no, there is no good answer to that question, right?
I think, I think there is.
Well, no, there, because, you know, let's just say for a second, this isn't true, but let's say that my house is older than every other house on the street, right? And it is because it predates the whole rest of the neighborhood, and at some point, people filled in, right? Well, that makes my house more significant than every other house on the street. That, that's not, it's not a fault of my property, but it's also not a fault of the properties that are around me either. But that's why when you throw a dart at the map and you hit one property surrounded by a whole bunch that aren't significant, is because that's the way the village developed. Now, again, we're talking about 120 properties out of 2,500 who may, maybe someday, might consider the idea of demolishing their house, or their wall, or fill in the blank. That's it. Now, you cited the, the, the Wall and Garrison, I, I think that's a spectacular example. I, I openly admit, I voted against nominating that as a landmark, right? Now, why did I do that? Because I believe, A, that the HPC hasn't done a good enough job of their homework, that the nomination was based on language that. that the nomination was based on language that has copped out of this twenty-four-year-old thing that used a lot of ifs and thens and maybes and couldbe's and possibles, but not really any real hard and fast data that, that actually justified the subject, the subject matter. Secondly, though, was that the homeowner of that property today and the homeowner of that property before loved that wall. They bought that property because of that wall. I suspect that anyone who buys that property is going to buy that property because of that wall. It is one of the singularly unique characteristics of that property. In fact, it is more unique than the houses itself. It's also singularly unique on Garrison. And so from a community perspective, there is a desire to not lose that as that singularly unique characteristic. Does it need to be a landmark to do that? No. If the next homeowner or two homeowners later said, you know what, we're going to back a truck into that wall and we're going to file for a permit to do it, at the very least, the way this is written, that person would have to have that conversation and HPC wouldn't have to run out and chain themselves to the bulldozer to stop them. And it would simply hit the brake on the potential of losing something that I think in broad general terms, the community admires and appreciates. Now again, we leave it the way it is, all twenty-five hundred properties as opposed to the hundred and twenty. Difference will be is that we're simply doing the sift now as opposed to then. So, because it's the same argument. I mean, I come in and I apply, my property's on that list, Tim's going to send a meal, a meal to HPC saying, say, hey, Matt's looking to demo his house and he's not on the list. Are you good? And they all put their thumbs up and they move on. Or you could simply make that determination right then and move on. It, it's just about streamlining the process, that's all. It's not targeting its focus.
And I'd just like to add to that, um, the street I live on, there must be the two blocks from Main Street to Belmont, eight, ten historic homes from the eighteen hundreds. And like I said in the last meeting, I welcome this stimulation, excuse me. If I, my biggest fear is, I live in a house from eighteen twenty that was built by the Hershey family. There are two other homes in my area that are also Hershey family owned. If I moved and put my house on the market, I live on an acre of land, my biggest fear is a developer will come in and demolish this beautiful, old, majestic historic house to build a huge McMansion. So I welcome this. I do not want somebody who does buy my property to demolish the Hershey home that stood there for, since eighteen hundreds.
Okay, so if you welcome it, what my suggestion to you would be is the same as what Ms. Hunt did with her home. Why don't you go through the process with the help of HPC? I mean, you have a direct link here, you know, being on a board with HPC. And why don't you go on, you know, through the process to protect it for future generations? Because it's something you want, but what I'm saying is there are a lot of people out there who don't want that.
Well, I think everybody who lives in a historic home presently definitely wants that. We know that some houses that were listed on this, this list don't belong to it. We agree to that. I mean, like the gentleman with the full house, we know that was a mistake. And I think it should be reviewed again, but I do not think that we should abolish it, absolutely not. That's my viewpoint.
All right, so I want to read a letter that I received from a, um, resident of Seatinging, from Mr. Patrick Kelly at one-twenty Oak Grove Drive. Dear Mayor Rogers and Village Trustees, I have significant reservations regarding the proposed local law. I received a mailing from the village stating that this proposal was simply requiring me to go before the Historic Preservation Committee if I file for a demolition permit for my home. At first, I did not have a big issue with that. However, upon further thought, I strongly object. Apparently, someone liked the look of my house in the nineteen nineties and listed my house as a few dozen others as potential historic resources in the village planning guidelines. Although I am very proud of my house and take good care of it, there is nothing so unique or historic about it that deserves to be separated from the rest of the community. It was built in nineteen twenty-nine at a time when many houses were built in the village. It is not made from any unique materials. It is an English Tudor style that was very common in Western New York at that time. I obviously have no plans on asking for any kind of demolition. However, I question why ninety-five percent of the village homeowners are free to dispose of their real property as they see fit without government intervention, but I will not be able to do so. What business is it of the village Historic Preservation Committee to decide my financial future? What if some wealthy person wants to overpay me for my property so she can build a new energy efficient cave next to her best friend? Again, ninety-five percent of the village property owners can demo and sell, but I need to go before a committee and get its blessing. I do not believe that is right or fair. However, my biggest concern is this just being the tip of the iceberg. I am concerned that once the historic resource properties are placed in the special category, that one by one, the village historic commission will start to move the houses into designations as historic structures and I will have to deal with all those restrictions. I listened to a few recent meetings wherein walls and other structures were being nominated and heard members of the historic board say there really was no additional burdens on the homeowner. That simply is not true. I was the village attorney back in the nineteen nineties when the law was updated and I recall speaking to various members of the village board and expressing my concerns about the requirement on homeowners. I have since reviewed the law and the various documents in the village master plan and I again state that there are many requirements for even, for even simple repairs or changes. Maybe the village does not always enforce these requirements, but they still exist. For example, if designated, I cannot change the color of my trim without board approval. Why should I have to wait for someone else to decide the color of my trim? My home has a slate roof. Every few years, I pay serious money to a contractor to replace the falling slates or fix leaks. If my house is designated, I technically need to file for a permit each time they come. I will need to show samples of the tiles and have plans submitted for the work to be performed. I will then have to wait for the committee to meet and approve my plans. That could be months from start to finish. What if the committee decides they do not like the match or they want it nailed a certain way? What if I decide that this huge recurring cost is too much and I desire an asphalt roof instead? The committee could decide to deny that and the economic cost could be so much I would have to sell and sell for significantly less because the new owner would have to pay for it. All this will be costly in time and money, same for my windows. They are single paying. What if I decide to change them to make them more fuel efficient? Against the plants and specs and this committee that does not know me or my family or my financial circumstances makes the decisions for me. To me, this change in the law is a start down the slippery slope and I'm against the addition of this new requirement. Very truly yours, Patrick Kelly.
Right, so.
And I don't know if we need to revise, I think we should get into public hearing or whatever because we may keep hearing.
You should, but I, but I want to be very, very, very clear that these, that the bulk of this individual's objections are not without merit. If that individual lived in a designated property and the statement, and this is, I want to be radiantly clear about this too, that once this historic resource property is placed in this special category, one by one, the historic commission will start to move the houses into designations as historic structures. I'll have to deal with those restrictions. This is exactly what the HPC has not been doing for twenty-four years. That special category is not something that the demolition code is creating. That is something that was literally created when this particular property and the hundred and twenty other properties in the village were identified as potentially significant by that reconnaissance level survey. That's when that slippery slope started. Has nothing to do with this conversation about the demo code. That is about designation by this board after two public hearings and a nomination. Everything that they're objecting to is government oversight on private property as a function of historic preservation. That is not the topic at hand. And there is nothing stopping HPC from nominating one-twenty Oak Grove Drive at their next meeting, whether this demo code is adopted or not.
Well, and, and yes to, to that entire explanation, but I've also just stated that I think that is very unfair of a process. And I realize because we are a certified local government, you know, it's kind of, you know, that, that quid pro quo kind of attitude. Like, you know, we give you grant money to do these intensive level historic surveys, but there's a few strings attached with that money. So it's never free money. There's always strings attached and the strings attached are this. The strings are, is that if you was the homeowner, if you're, if one-twenty Oak Grove is nominated by Historic Preservation Commission and they, and, and, and let's, if they're nominating it, it means they're a yes come time after the public hearing. So they bring their yes vote to this board. And if this, this is where the buck stops here. So if this board says, if there are three individuals who sit on this board and says, yes, I agree with HPC, whether you want your house historically landmarked or not, sorry, Oak Grove one-twenty, we're going to nominate you. That's where the buck stops and that homeowner has no recourse and can, cannot say, thanks, but no thanks, I really don't want that on my property. And that is intrinsically, I think, the underlying current here of what is surfacing through this demo code now, to your point. I think that, you know, there's this, you know, just people wanting the ability to control what they do with their private property and, and.
But, 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 that is not the topic.
I understand it's not, but understand the connection that people are making.
Oh, I know, they're leaping, they're leaping super far.
Well, and you know what? In today's world, it's maybe not that much of a leap, okay? Let's be honest. We cannot say who's going to sit on this board at any given time.
I get that, but this demo code, which is all about permits, I might add, it's about streamlining permits, does not change anything about the current situation except that it identifies a hundred and twenty properties as opposed to twenty-five hundred. That is it. The nomination process, your objection to the CLG status, the potential for historic designation, historic design guidelines on commercial versus residential, put that in a suitcase and set it aside because it is not the topic. And I agree with you, this may be scratching at this topic and bringing other issues to the fore, but they are not relevant to the discussion because the discussion is whether or not this referral to HPC, this, hey, guys, someone looks to demolish something and hey, you want, this is your last chance, is applicable to a hundred and twenty properties or twenty-five hundred properties? That is the only topic in there.
Agreed, but I, so what I'm saying is.
Well, then, then we need to stop talking about literally everything other than that.
But if we're getting that much of a concern over that, why not just take that out of there? It doesn't exist in there now. Why?
It does exist in, I keep saying, it is the existing code.
It, well, it's fifty years, yes, fifty years, but it doesn't specifically say in there.
It's a slight change.
It's a slight, what I'm saying, but people are seeing, people are writing to us, they're, they're having concerns for that.
Because they do not understand, because clearly, since the, the topic of these letters is about designation and governance of the designation after landmark status.
That's not what we're discussing.
It is unclear and I am trying to reiterate that.
I understand that, I, I really do.
But you continue to steer the conversation, to body the conversation.
And you're confusing everybody. Oh, I, no, please don't say I. I received a letter I read from Mr. Patrick Kelly.
I understand that.
Everybody's getting confused though.
I'm not, well.
That's the problem now because you're mishmashing too many things.
Who's mishmashing? What am I?
You are, you're bringing.
Oh, I'm mishmashing?
Yes, you are.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that I was all of a sudden Mr. Patrick Kelly, attorney of Seatinging as well, so.
But we were discussing the demolition, not about historic designation.
I understand, yes.
We have to get back on the topic.
We can get back on the topic, but what I'm saying is that this code, those letters that were sent out struck a code with people and people are, you know.
Well, they misunderstood it like Matt explained earlier, very clearly. And the B printed it incorrectly and that's what they were going by.
Okay.
And the letter from the gentleman from anonymous letter was also incorrect. We, we have to stay with the correct topic and basically what the code says. And they're making this all up as we go along. We can't do that. We're here talking about the demolition and that's it. Nothing about designation, nothing about your house, my house, that's it. Just the demolition.
Well, I didn't talk about your house, she did, but.
But I, because you got into the historic landmark status and all that. This is not about historic landmark status.
And I, and I do understand that, but what I'm saying is I think we are scratching, there's obviously.
That's, that's for another time then, not tonight.
Well, I do think we're, while we are opening the public hearing, so if there's anyone here tonight who would like to talk on this, speak on this topic, please come up to the mic and state your name and address.
Boy, I never thought, Nick Roth, one-thirty-five Oak Grove. I don't have a horse in this race and I never thought that you people would spend, it was seven-thirty-five when you suggested you go into this public session, it's now eight-twenty-five. I was in the disclosure business for consumer lending. When you get your credit card, you apply for a credit card, you get a document, you never bother to read. Um, anytime you sign a loan note, you don't read it because all the fine print, the big print giveth, the fine print taketh away. And you people are talking about fine print. Matt, I know you're a civil engineer. When you were doing your preamble, I guess more when you were an attorney because you were going back and forth a million times. And to be fair, I would have to listen to the recording of your statement. But I heard a few things that come to mind now. You said regardless of either what this board does or HPC does, it's already established by shippo and, and this thing always already exists. Is that a fair statement?
Wha- what thing?
Well, about this, this, uh, the, the demolition, um.
So the, the demolition code that is the village code right now states that any property seeking a demolition that is fifty years or older should be referred to HPC for their potential, their, their, their last opportunity to potentially nominate if they felt appropriate. That's what it says right now.
Okay, so we, we have the HPC, but this board has the approval.
Well, so, no, no, wait, 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 wait. So again, so the question becomes whether or not they choose to nominate.
Right.
If they choose not to nominate, the conversation ends and everything moves on.
Right.
If they choose to nominate, then they hold a public hearing and we hold a public hearing. That is the last opportunity for a governing body to have a voice as to whether or not a landmark is created, right?
Is there hard and fast criteria for the HPC anywhere in New York State from shippo to make a determination or is it subjective?
No, there's hard, there's five criteria that they have to, that has to be, fall under first.
Yeah, were those five criteria disclosed to these hundred and twenty people in that survey from twenty-four years ago?
I have.
Matt, excuse me, I'm not that, what, what is that criteria? Those five criteria ultimately disclosed to these people when the letters were received as to what might happen?
I have no idea what was disclosed in nineteen ninety-seven.
I can, I can say no because I received one of those letters and I received ones, I can say no, that was not.
And, and as far as, as far as what the reconnaissance level survey is, is as it was characterized by the gentleman who lives on the hall, it was literally a design, a preservation design consultant who toured every linear foot of right way in the village and identified those properties that were, again, attention.
According, according to the established by, by, by criteria.
Potentially, right.
Potentially, or?
Potentially, potentially.
So not a large, we don't know.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right, it could have been your property. I mean, there's several in Oak Grove that were identified as, as old or potentially significant or for one reason or another, and they simply make a comment. If you read it, it's a, there's usually two or three sentences opposed, associated with every property that says, you know, it's not like it was a Tudor.
Matt, just hang, hang on, hang, hang on a second. I, I, if I'm understanding Mr. Roth's question, and I apologize if I'm not, or if I mischaracterize it, but I think you're asking whether at the time, the reconnaissance level survey, did that consultant who was hired by the village apply the criteria that exists today or existed at the time with respect to historic, and the, and the answer is yes. They're the same standards and it's basically the same standards that were established by the, the, the Secretary of Interior of the United States because all the little historic preservation laws in all the states basically follow the Secretary of Interior standards. And those are the criteria. And so the, the reconnaissance level survey compared properties against those criteria, identified those that that consultant thought may satisfy one or more of those criteria and, and delivered a report to the village. And the HPC acted over the years on some of those and, and did further studies by. and, and did further studies by having intensive level surveys done on other, on specific buildings and specific parts of the village. So that's what, that's how that process works. So it was not a, just somebody's subjective looking around and say, I think that property is historic and I think that property is historic. That consultant was using the criteria that has been used essentially by all historic preservation commissions in evaluating property. Doesn't mean they got it right. Doesn't mean this, the village HPC or the village board has to agree with them. It was, it was a service that the village paid for to help inform them in terms of going forward and deciding which properties they want to landmark. And that's all it was. And that's all it is.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. But I, but getting back to my point, I, I believe that that criteria should be disclosed to these people because they have questions. I, sometimes it takes me 40 minutes to walk to my house from Main Street because people come running out and say, I got this letter or what's happening at the village and things like that. I mean, that's not my job and I don't pretend to have all the answers. But I knew, do know, a lot of the people on Oak Grove who received the letters were a little miffed by the fact that they felt they did not have enough time to digest this and not receiving that criteria. And Ms. Tori, Patrick Kelly's a real estate attorney with decades and decades of experience. So he knows quite a bit about real estate. And he was the village attorney and knows about historic preservation. And he's somebody that believes, I've heard the term kicked around gateway legislation or a gateway law. That's a fear in anybody's mind. I also heard that the South Cayuga district was initially identified for commercial properties on South Cayuga. Did you, was that a periscope? Did you say that?
The, the original, the original pursuit was because there was a fear of development on a large parcel on South Cayuga. So it was determined to try. It was, it was, the intensive level survey was sought.
The intensive level survey, I can probably explain it best. There's a property on South Cayuga that sits off the road that, it was quite a few of behind the adjacent properties that you see if you're driving down on the creek side. Their properties do not run to the creek. This property that sits further back has a long stretch, almost like a dog link of property that runs along all of them. So my understanding is that two members who sat on the Historic Preservation Commission at the time happened to live on South Cayuga and happened to be, have property on the creek side. And they were concerned that when, when and if this home sold, that it would be developed all along the creek and essentially in their backyards and they didn't want that. So my understanding is that when these grant monies became available, instead of perhaps, I don't know, taking it to Ms. Tori's neighborhood where all of the homes are built in 1800s, they decided to nominate or try to nominate South Cayuga. The homes on that street are not nearly as old as what Mrs. Tori's neighborhood is. So I was obviously puzzled as to like, why would you do, you know, want to nominate South Cayuga? And then I later find out that it was because two members were seated as volunteers on that commission. And that is why the study was done of South Cayuga.
Okay. And I seem to remember either reading something earlier this year or hearing something that possibly people want to pursue an Oak Grove Historic District as well.
Well, Oak Grove, you can speak to that, was identified somewhere.
So, so again, within the context of this reconnaissance level survey, when the consultant identified wholesale neighborhoods that had a large percentage of contributing structures, it was suggested that an approach to nomination for those neighborhoods would be to consider the idea of a historic district similar to South Cayuga, similar to North Ellicott. There's even a small district that's proposed that's suggested, and just be very clear with the wording here, all right? Suggested by a consultant two and a half decades ago, that the Mission Style Houses on Monroe Drive are also potentially worthy of a small mini district, right? That doesn't mean that anyone is actively pursuing these things. It is simply a document that the village possesses. And yes.
And the thought that somebody may at some point in time pursue it.
Absolutely.
And that's, and that's what scares people. And that's what, that's why, yeah. And that, that's why you get the term gateways. Because people say, well, this could just be the tip of the iceberg. And that's what I hear from my neighbors who received the letter. Now, they should be here instead of me, but I, I just, I, I, I think you need to extend this hearing because it is so darn confusing for people. And I've heard so many things and I wish I had a pad and a pencil with me to make a lot of notes so I can ask the proper questions. And again, Matt, I'm just going to have to listen to this and maybe you and I have a, an offline conversation when I can see where I'm trying to get at. But because this is so confusing, I, I would urge you to extend this hearing and try to get those homeowners who have received these letters and explain to them there are very specific criteria to be designated as a significant home, just not historic. Is that what I'm hearing? That there's criteria that will be used if their properties are to be identified and tagged as significant?
Uh, yes, there are.
Yes, but.
But to make this radiantly clear, this topic, what we're talking about has nothing to do with the demolition code.
I, I, I understand that, but.
Well, but I, but I, but I, I know you do. But I need anyone who reads this transcript, listens to this tape, everyone in this room to be very, very clear that we are not talking about the process for historic designation. We are not. We're talking about if and when anyone chooses to file for a demolition permit, the building code official has a requirement to notify HPC of that application. And the only question on the floor tonight is whether that is applied to every parcel in the village or to only those parcels that a professional consultant, using the five criteria that could potentially make a property satisfied being potentially significant, has already sifted down and identified. That's the only question. What happens after that conversation is already encoded and has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Understood. But I still think there's a lot of confusion.
Right. Because, because the conversation continues to twist away from the topic. As Ms. Tori was alluding to earlier as well. Because we continue to talk about historic designation process.
And in terms of the district stuff, again, I apologize if I'm interrupting, but I, I just want to point out that, that, that the reconnaissance level survey did identify both South Cayuga and Oak Grove as potential candidates for historic district. And that was recognized in the comp plan that the village adopted in 2010 and amended in 2015. So that's, that's those, that idea has been out there in official village planning documents for several decades now. And, and, and including in the current village comprehensive plan. However, to my knowledge, I mean, I, I don't regularly attend HPC meetings, but to my knowledge, I don't think that there's any current active consideration about creating districts in either of those locations or elsewhere in the village. But but just to be clear, if people, it's not like that's something that's just popped up, that, that those, the idea of those two areas being historic districts have have been in official village planning documents for, as I said, since at least 1997.
Right. And then thank you for that, Chip, and that's understood. But then people logically go or jump into the question, well, why now? Why after this being dormant for 24?
Well, I don't think it is. I mean, to be, again, I don't, nobody's talking about it now. I'm, I'm just pointing out that it's been there. I don't. Right? I mean, is it, I haven't seen, is HPC discussing this on their agenda? This, in this public hearing, this local law has absolutely nothing to do with any of that.
Exactly. But you start people thinking and you get to the gateway about changing windows and changing. I, I, Matt, I, I, I hear you, but this is the way and, you know, you guys are the government and you say, you know, we're from the government, we're here to help you. You know the reaction. Nobody's necessarily going to sign on board with it. So maybe there's a better way this has to be written. I don't know, but there's a lot of confusion out there. That's all that I'm saying.
Yeah. So like, I guess, you know, don't shoot the messenger, you know, right?
Right.
You know, I, I did, I did prompt Pat Kelly. I've never had a conversation with Patrick Kelly for the record. I received this late today. Maybe like, I'd have to look at my email 4:15 or so. You know, I had Keaton run copies. So, you know, this is, I mean, this isn't like preempted by me. So, you know, please don't try to, you know, insinuate that in any way. I mean, I, Mr. Roth is here this evening, you know, and I don't know who else that are here. These folks are here to speak on this or not. We'll find out. But, you know, I just think there is, you bring up a valid point. We are understanding what you're saying, Matt, you know, and I understand what Ms. Tori is saying. But I also, you have to understand that when people are coming to you with these fears and concerns, you don't just throw them to the side and say, you know, I'll forget about it. This isn't, you know, let's try to like help, number one, educate people to get an understanding. And then, you know, as a board, you know, as you said, we have this suitcase over here of like the white elephant that nobody ever wants to see and to talk about it. Well, guess what? We're going to be talking about it. Okay? Because it seems to be a recurring conversation on this board and I want to discuss it thoroughly. So tonight might not be the evening, you know, certainly, but you know, in the future we will. So, thank you, Mr. Roth.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. So if you're here to comment on what we've been discussing, please come up to the mic and state your name and address. Anyone else? Is there anyone online, Keaton, that wants to comment on this particular public hearing?
Actually, yes, there are. There are two participants who raised their hand. Wait until I call you. First one was Toby. Toby, if you'd like, please address the board about this topic.
Yes, hi, this is Vic Parkett from 43 Howard Ave here. Obviously, my name isn't Toby. That's my wife's name. Nice to hear everybody. It's been a long time since I've participated in a meeting like this. I, you know, in, in hearing all the discussion tonight, I just want to say that I actually look at this as not necessarily historic preservation proposal. I look at it as a pro-development proposal. Because what's happening is that there are a number of, so and in, in a way that is really inequitable across all the village residents. Because in a way, what happens is anybody that isn't on that list, that 5%, the 95% of people can get, can demolish their houses without a lot of oversight, which probably isn't a good thing because there are plenty of other houses in the village that may have some kind of character, might, might be interesting to have people have a look at that before that demolition takes place. And it penalizes the 5% of us that have houses that have been identified based on those three or four sentence descriptions as basically being pretty and having some some architectural merit to them, which is different, right? So, so going back to where the code stands now, every, everybody who has a house that's over 50 years has to go through some kind of review. I think that's actually pretty fine. And what, what, so I'm trying to think of who does this benefit? Well, it may, maybe it makes it so the Historic Preservation Committee doesn't have to review as many demolishing applications each year, and there aren't many of them. Let them do the work, take a look at all the houses that want to be demolished each year and, and, and make recommendations accordingly. To, to pick 5% of the village based on a survey conducted 24 years ago and things have changed, as people have said earlier, doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't seem fair. That's my comment. I'll stop. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Parkett.
Okay, next up, we have Christine Hunt.
There we are. Good evening, Mayor Rogers, trustees, Matt E. Two, Basil Piazza, Dave Sherman, and trustee Tori. Thank you all for this very interesting discussion. But like everybody has said, it is off topic.
Okay, can you just, can we just, Ms. Christine Hunt, just for the record, is the chairperson of this Historic Preservation Commission?
Oh, yeah.
And she's also a resident, you know, of, of the village as well, obviously.
75 Evans Street. I'm sorry, I take that, I should have clarified that, yes. 75 Evans Street, a locally designated historic property by my own choice. And yes, chairperson of the HPC committee. However, this is written and it's a matter of changing three words, because the code already exists and it has existed for many years. It was just to change a few words. And it is only changing the building or structure that is 50 or more years old to an historic resource. So that was, I believe the effort was to to narrow that group that would have to go before HPC. So that if my neighbor wants a demo permit, they can just go get one. They don't have to be delayed necessarily. Now, if people feel that they want every property in the village to come before HPC, that's fine too. If that's the general consensus that the board is feeling from the public, that's fine too. It's, either way it is written, it was written to make the other residents not have to be looked at. Let's put it that way. The other residential properties. I think the fear and unfortunate, it's so unfortunate that it created fear. But I think misinformation and lack of education is what creates fear in any society, in any circumstance. So we have been trying, HPC Historic Preservation Commission has been trying this year, this past year, to really educate people, to bring us out in the light. We had a wonderful event last week for the commercial buildings that was very well received. I'm sure many people saw it in the B. And our goal is to educate people and help them to appreciate what we do. We are certainly we are certainly not running around with, you know, you know, ideas of grandeur of, of telling people what they can do to their home or not do. We considered, before I was chair, it was, they considered rewriting or writing a version for residential design standards that would eliminate things like color issues. And I think that needs to be revisited and we need to really look at this more closely. I know I'm totally off the topic because that's where everybody else has been tonight. But I just want the public to understand that if they have those miss, that misinformation or that lack of education, our, our goal is to, is to change that. To look at the design, commercial buildings are very different than residential buildings. You know, we can, we can generate a friendly residential design standard. You know, we could have public meetings. We can do all kinds of things. I have a, a woman that joined us last week for the event from Preservation Buffalo Niagara, who's more than willing to sit down and have town hall meetings with the public on historic preservation and historic designation. And we have all kinds of things going on in the background because we really want to just help to educate people so then they will not have fear. And Matt, thank you. You were eloquent. You described everything perfectly. Trustee Tori, call me. I'll get you an application. We can get your house started. Kidding, only kidding. But, you know, anybody who wants to look into it or do it, please contact, contact us. You know, don't, don't be afraid. I, I think just missing, like I say, misinformation and, and lack of education begets fear. So we, we want to help. Thank you. And that is all the time I will take.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Thank you.
Would anybody else who, who was on the Zoom meeting tonight like to speak on this matter? Public hearing is still open. Anybody at all?
I'm going to keep, we are going to keep it open. Okay. All right. So seeing that there's no one here this evening else to speak on it, I will take Mr. Roth's suggestion. And I had thought maybe we would close it this evening, but I, I would like to keep it open at least for another two weeks. Our next board meeting is June 28th. So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing at our next village board meeting, which will be Monday, June 28th at 7:30 PM. All in favor? Okay. And next, thank you for those who are waiting. We're going to enter regular suspension of rules for public participation. So if you have any thoughts or ideas or complaints, now's your time to come up. We just ask you to state your name and address. Yeah. Come up to the mic and let us know what's on your mind. Oh, I gotta make a motion. I'm sorry. I forgot. I got caught up in all the excitement of the last conversation. I forgot. So I'll make a motion to open this as some. So I'll make a motion to open the suspension of rules for public participation. All in favor? All right, now you make up.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to say a few words tonight. I'm Mike Luminson. I am a twenty-two-year resident of the village, seventeen years on Los Rovels and five years on Sky Drive. I'm joined tonight by some friends, some village homeowners, that's Kevin Blenigan, Karen Kelly, and Adriana Martinez. And we are all here to speak with you tonight about Fifty Seven Seventy-Five Main Street, the corner of Main and Garrison. So it's, I look at this property almost every night, because I'm a heavy, heavy dog walker. Somebody who might recognize me if you saw my two dogs, probably not me, but the dogs, right? But I think when I lived in the West Village, this thing just kind of became a parking lot that I passed by every day, and I just sort of didn't really give it too much thought, I guess. But now that I live on the east side and I walk by it all the time, it got me thinking about it, and each time I walk by it, I think about it a little bit more. And I started to like talk to some people about it. And I looked at what it was assessed for, and I found out that the land has been sitting undeveloped for over fifteen years. And it strikes me that the village and the village residents have been extremely patient, waiting for something to happen with this lot. This isn't just any lot, right? This sits in probably arguably the busiest or, you know, it's the heart of the village, right? I mean, there's only so much land within the heart of the village that can be developed, and it's sitting empty and unused. And I don't have any relationship with the developers, so I don't know what the reasons are that they haven't developed it. But I do know that that developer owns, you know, give or take thirty, forty properties in the town of Amherst that have all been developed. So why not this property? Obviously, other things have been developed up and down Main Street that have been very successful. I don't think we need to think too hard about that to think about properties that are doing really well, and things that are being built right now, you know. So I think even with having come through the pandemic, the village is, it's an exciting time to build in.
Sorry.
And we can try to push the. Yours might not be working anymore. Yours might not be working anymore.
Should I continue?
Yeah, continue.
Okay, great. So anyway, I think there's two big points I want to make about this property. One is it's a parking lot, it's an eyesore in our beautiful village that, you know, you all have worked so hard to beautify. And committees have done an outstanding job. I love the new sidewalks and all the improvements to the parks, and it's fantastic. But here we have this big eyesore sitting in the middle of the village, and I don't think we should take it anymore. I mean, I really think that we need to compel something to happen at this spot. I actually called Al Yates a couple nights ago to discuss, because I know he's had discussions about this property with many of you probably, and I think you all have some familiarity with the reasons maybe that, you know, nothing's happened here. And Attorney Greco, I know you're on the line, I think you're still on the line. And Al had told me that, you know, you had counsel that perhaps it was unconstitutional, you know, to challenge a landowner to, you know, to develop. And it might be costly for us to go to court, you know, to try to compel something to happen here. But I did some quick back-of-necking math on the costs related to this property. So just to refresh everybody's mind, in case you haven't thought too much about this. And my numbers could be a little off, so don't hold me to it. But in talking to Al, Al said that in prior discussions, you all, or at least he was of the mind that this property fully developed was going to be worth between fifteen and twenty million dollars. I checked in with Dave Sutton, who's also an acquaintance of mine, if he agreed with that, because he's been involved with other developments all up and down Main. He said at least ten million, and ten million is probably on the low side. We're currently assessed at one million dollars on that property. So if I apply the same tax rate that I have on my property to that property, I'm not sure if it's difference between residential and commercial. If it's the same, that means the village is taking about six thousand dollars a year off this property right now. Ten times that would be sixty thousand dollars. Fifteen years undeveloped has cost the village eight hundred and ten thousand dollars if this was to be built and assessed at fifteen million dollars. So you tell me, what's it costing us not to go after this guy and get something done? We, I think that, you know, there's, I think there's a fiduciary duty up there to make sure that, you know, that within this stretch of property on Main Street, that we can, you know, get tax dollars from, that we do something with it, right? So, you know, I really want to stop there and hear what you guys have to say. And I know time is probably short tonight, because we spent a lot of time on the other issue.
You made a damn good point. He did have reasons in the past. One was the Hotel at Man South, South Forest. You want to see how that, how that worked?
Worked out really well.
And it worked out very well. And then he built his own hotel next to the two ninety. And he said that was taking a lot of his time and energy. But those are long ago completed. So he's truly out of reasons, as far as I can tell. And yeah, I agree. I don't know what we can do, but he's certainly a good five or six years as a minimum overdue. And I agree with you. But I don't know what we can do. And somebody can answer that better than I can.
Yeah, well, I think I would ask Chip, because he's our attorney. Chip, would there be anything legally that we're able to do?
Well, yeah, there's a number of things we could do, whether, you know, the village would have to decide to do it. You know, as most of you are probably aware, the town of Amherst got fed up with a vacant piece of property on Niagara Falls Boulevard and Kenmore Avenue. That litigation's been going on for, I don't know, five years? Man, probably not that long, three years now. No, I'm not saying, I mean, we could do, so there's eminent domain. I mean, if we identify a public purpose for that property, we could potentially take that property. And the Supreme Court in the United States has actually ruled that even if you take a property from one private owner, developer, and give it to another one, that's could be constitutional. But that's an expensive process, and you know, the village will have to pay the developer, the fair market value of that property, and, you know, that developer may very well fight that use of eminent domain. So that's one possible. Another thing that might help prevent these things is beyond the village's control, is if New York State taxed property differently. If a taxed property, based on the value of that property, as it could ultimately be developed, rather than taxing vacant property less than developed property, there wouldn't be an incentive to sit on those properties. So if somebody had to pay taxes on the property as if it were developed, that would be a strong incentive to develop property and not sit on it like that. But short of that, you know, but again, that's something New York State would have to authorize. It's not, land value taxation is not something that that municipalities in New York State have the ability to do. So that's a potential tool, but that's something to discuss with your state representatives. Other than that, I mean, I think we can, we, you know, we just went through an, over an hour of discussion about whether a referral for certain demolition permits was eroding people's private property rights. If we're talking about compelling somebody to develop property, obviously that's controversial and is going to run into some, you know, and I don't, I'm not aware of any legislative scheme in New York State that, that does that, short of using the eminent domain process. So that's really the most likely and established scenario, and the village could do that. If it, if it felt it was in the public's interest to take that property and either do something with it itself, I mean, town of Amherst with the property they took, they're turning into a park. But, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the Supreme Court determined that it was a proper use of eminent domain for the city of New London in Connecticut to take private property from somebody and to give it to a developer to develop it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
Can you compel the owner to sell it if he's not developing it?
No, I mean, not that I'm, you know, not, not that I'm aware of. I mean, I'm not, I don't know what authority we would have to do that, other than to take it. Again, we always, municipalities have always had and always will have the ability to use their powers of eminent domain.
Can I, can I just ask, so if, if that's a road sign of the town did that, so did they need to open up a public hearing before they voted on the eminent domain, or did they, as just a board, decide that they were going to take over that property?
It's a good question, Mayor. I, you know, we've never used eminent domain here in the village, so I'm trying to, you know, and I haven't actually been involved in an eminent domain proceeding in quite a while. So I can't answer the questions that you already know, whether there'd be a public hearing involved in that process or not.
I'm just asking, because we, there are contingencies of, you know, there are residents in the village who, who don't want development, who are, you know, who are complaining about the North Elegant, the building that's going up on North Elegant. I, you know, I've been hearing and seeing a lot of complaints from people who don't want that. They would just prefer to have an empty bank parking lot over there. So I just, that's why I'm asking the question about public hearing, if that would need to be overturned.
Green space would be lovely too, right?
Yeah, exactly. My thought exactly, because I've been looking at that open space now for fifteen years as well. And I, as a resident, thought the same thing. Why don't we have in our codes that if it's not developed within three years, they make it into a green space until they decide what to do with it?
We do have, we do have that in the code.
So why are we using that?
The problem is it was adopted because of that property?
So it was after the fact? Oh, my gosh.
Well, again, I think we can require, you know, potentially some beautification of that property. That we could certainly regulate those sorts of activities. But, but to compel them to build something, put it some, that's, that's a totally different matter.
All right, well, so, so let's continue pulling on that thread then, Chip, because my understanding is that the landscaping requirements that are in the demolition code today are post the demolition of that building. And it would, we can't apply that retroactively.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, but I'm not, I'm not talking about the demolition standards. I'm saying if we wanted to adopt minimum standards for vacant lots to prevent them from being an eyesore, that's certainly.
We have those, that exists, it's in the landscape code. But it was adopted because of Main and Garrison. So how do we apply that retroactively? How do we enforce that now?
I don't, I, I'm not sure. What do you mean they were, in the landscape code now, we have?
We have a, we have a standard that requires that if the property is demolished and remains vacant for a period of time, they are, oh, I'm sorry, it's in the MU code, that they're required to provide a landscape plan for the duration of time that it is unoccupied. But that was retroactively applied to the code because of inaction at Main and Garrison.
I'll have to, so you're saying in the MU, I'll take a look at that. I don't, but but.
So what it sounds like, though, to answer Mr. Luminson's question, is that really what I'm hearing is that the only way for us to really do anything about that parcel would be for us to take it by eminent domain?
Well, it depends what we want to see, what, it depends what we're talking about in terms of doing something about it. If we're saying we want somebody to develop it, yeah.
If I could, you know, Chip, you said early on that if you work through the state, you could, I don't know the terminology used, but you could.
Land value taxation, it's something that, you know, again, I think is one, you know, something that's been advocated by many groups and people for many years, and it's just never, it's never happened.
There's no instances of anyone being.
Oh, no, I know there's, like, Pennsylvania has it. I actually do think maybe it's used in some, I think New York City actually may have it now, but.
I'll say this, I think if we were capable of doing that, not only would it solve the problem on this corner, but it would protect other parts of the village as well from this happening again in the future.
But to be clear, this is a state law that would need to be changed.
I, I understand, but if you're going to look at all your different options, eminent domain is one. And then, you know, working through this with the state is another. Doing nothing is another, right? So there's only so many levers you can pull on this, and I just want to be sure that, you know, the board, if you're going to consider what your next move is related to this property, that you think about each of them. Because they all probably have different merits. But I do think that, you know, the ability to, you know, tax that property, you know, as if it were a developed property, I think would make sure that the developers take it seriously, right? Because clearly, whatever pain point this particular developer has on that property, it doesn't bug him at all to let it sit fallow. And it should, right? It shouldn't be so simple for somebody to just sit on a prime parcel in our village for fifteen years. That's just, to me, it just seems inherently wrong, doesn't it?
Well, I don't, firstly, I don't see anything changing here. I mean, I see it every day too. But if I'm not mistaken, that same developer just added the parcel on Transit Road just north of the thruway, where he tore down a hotel, and I think a restaurant. And that has sat for probably a year and a half. It's not an Amherst or a Replains, unless I think it's cheap to water. But you talk about an empty parcel that is, that I would say would be very, very valuable. And it must have lawful deep pockets, because, you know, just to leave it there with, with nothing is shameful.
Yeah, well, you know, his deep pockets, I guess, I don't care. You know, I mean, what I care about is that there's residents in this village that, you know, are trying to enjoy quality of life. We're here for a reason. I just paid my tax bill to the village for a reason, you know. And, you know, I don't want to limit a community that lets prime commercial property sit fallow. I think it's wrong, you know, something should happen with that property. And I think the board, if, you know, we need to create a different committee or something to study this or work on it. You know, I think it's just something we need to get after. Fifteen years is a very long time. And, you know, I would, I would hope that this is, you know, new business that you guys will take up and let's figure out some way to compel, you know, him to do something. I mean, I didn't take another route, which, you know, I probably could have, which was, you know, try to invite, you know, the news to write about this and so on and so forth. But I thought this was the first step, was to talk to you guys and see if we could, you know, come to, you know, some conclusion. You know, I don't, does the board try to talk to this developer and, you know, what are his reasons for?
I mean, I, I haven't, I could just say that, because, you know, actually at this point, I'm certainly familiar with that and have been now working with the villages as their attorney for over a decade. And this issue comes up, has come up many, many times. And I, the village, you know, I can't, I will not speak for the board of trustees who really speak for the village. But I can say that passports have certainly felt a lot of frustration over that. It's, it's not like the village is not aware of the issue and has not tried to prompt the developer to do something with that property. And has, as Matt alluded to, tried to, to make some changes to the code so that when there's going to be demolitions, that there has to be some sort of interim plan here. The problem was, in that case, that property had already been demolished before we did that. What I was trying to say is, just because we tied a redevelopment plan to a demo thing, doesn't mean we can't just also totally independent of apple demolition applications, just have design standards for lots, whether they're improved or not. And then I don't think we run into the retroactivity problem.
Well, but don't we? I mean, we could, we could write that code and adopt it two weeks from now. It still wouldn't apply to a pre-existing non-conforming condition.
Not necessarily. You could amortize it. I mean, there is no, I mean, getting into issues of non-conforming, I mean, the reason why there's protection for non-conforming uses is because of constitutional concerns. Because of constitutional concerns, so you have to. You have to allow for that to some extent, but not in perpetuity. That's why under our prior signed code, and we ended up changing that, but we had amortized out non-conforming signs. That's. Perfectly constitutional and, 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 and the non-conforming protection depend, you know, the, the. How far you can go and how far that protection has to go depends on how big of a burden you're putting on somebody. Requiring somebody to do landscaping is not necessarily a huge burden.
Right, so couldn't, I mean, so regardless of, you know, legality or the constitutionality of it, at this point, now ten, twelve, fifteen years after the adoption of that redevelopment plan. Could we not at least fire, uh, you know, uh, across the bow and say, okay, you've had a decade to like. Improve your parking lot. Now it's time to go to the redevelopment plan. I mean, it's been.
Well, I think, we know, because, I mean, in my opinion, no, that's not, what we should do is adopt. We should adopt standards and apply them to them. Or because I don't see how we can apply. I don't see how we can apply what's in the code right now to them, if the way it's written in there. Because that had to do with. A prerequisite to getting a demolition permit.
Yeah.
But if, if we adopted a new standard and. Existing non-conformity has a sunset, then are we not just continuing the current condition for the duration of time of that sunset?
Yeah, yeah, potentially, but I guess I, absolutely, but how long is that sunset? I mean, to me, this isn't a particularly, it depends, it's not a particularly big burden. That you're placing on. You know, the, 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 the reason why non-conforming use protections are in there because it was. Determined by the courts. That it was because zoning was a derogation of common law that, hey, you can't just like, if somebody has a lot of money invested. In a business, you just can't just take that away from them. But does he have a lot invested in a vacant lot? How much money has he put into that lot in the last fifteen years? Probably not very much. I, I don't, I don't, I, I wouldn't, I don't think, just sitting here talking off the top of my head, I don't think. He, they have a very, would have a very compelling argument for protection against. Perspective regulation of that lot.
Right. They, um, it's worth a try. So I took a, I took a look at, uh, the last time. That I had any conversation with, uh, Escol development, and it was last year, just a few weeks before COVID, and it was February. There was a gentleman who sent the village board a letter. And that letter was regarding an idea of having musical fair theater. At Garrison, Maine. So I reached out for A, the status of Garrison in Maine. And B, that idea. And, um, Escol responded that they had a conversation with musical fair about that same subject. But the possibility hadn't been ruled out, nor had it been ruled in. Uh, I'm mentioning all this because maybe it's time to get through a conversation, not necessarily. Legal ramifications, which are good to know. But given the fact that this just happened in February right before COVID. We got to also consider, just like Dave alluded to, he's got. Other properties that are just sitting. There's one dangly down the road, right where, um, Amy's Fine Jewellery is. Right next to that is a suite, completely vacant, and it's been vacant for a few years. We know it's a problem, but maybe it warrants a conversation. Yeah, as a, yeah, I, community development, I thank you for bringing the conversation.
Yeah, no doubt, and as, as a, as a village resident and taxpayer, I, I don't care whether it's carrots or sticks, let's just get it done.
Thank you.
So, uh, if the board wants, I can reach out to Paul again and see where his stance to the property.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I, I had a conversation with him when I took on the mayor role, and I went to his office and I asked him what, about that property. And, um, you know, so I, I, yeah, I mean, I, I, we've definitely been having this conversation, I feel like every. Year, year or two years, it keeps coming up, but. Um, you know, I don't know, I, I think our hands are kind of tied other than, you know, that. The eminent domain conversation, it sounds like with even writing a new landscaping plan, it's not really.
Well, I think a landscaping plan is a good first step.
I think if we could, I mean, I, I think if the, if the conversation, I mean. I remember having.
But a land, real quick, a landscaping plan isn't going to bring value. It's not like they're going to landscape and then open it to the public. It's going to break, it's going to be.
The other options are extremely.
Well, agreed.
But I mean, the town has deep pockets and they've been fighting that, that, about that corner. At, at, uh, Niagara Falls Boulevard in Kenmore for years.
Well, and, and I think beyond just deep pockets or not, let's just face it, an eminent domain conversation is, is gonna, is gonna be a slippery slope. And depending on who is sitting in the seats up here, whether or not they're, whether or not they're interested in going that route.
I think it's hard enough to know that, that. We don't want to go that route.
Well, right, I mean, because, because, you know, to that end, I mean, the, the problem is it can't be an empty block, right? So if fair market value for that property is not assessed value, you're. You know, assuming for a second that you actually won the eminent domain case, you're probably talking about two, two and a half million dollars. That the village would have to pony up and pay that property owner as part of that settlement, so, you know.
Yeah, well, I, I'll just go on record and say, I'm not interested in going down the road about it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the argument about lost revenue on taxes is, is a good conversation, but it represents about a third of the cost of. Potentially the cost of the village in excess of legal fees and years of battles, etc. But that being said, I'm not closing the door on that, but I do think. I, I mean, when I was chairman of the, when I, when I sat on the zoning board. And we had conversations with Escol, the question was, why should we grant you a variance for this project when you have sat vacant and dormant and inactive on this other property? What is the, you know, what is your deal? And there's, there's always. There's always a, another day, there's always a, a, there's something in the works, you know, something, I mean, I work for developers, there's always something in the works, but most of them don't sit on their properties. Like this, right? So I would say at a minimum, we need to have a conversation, but we can't accept excuses. The follow-up would be that, you know, we talked to them about the idea of it for very least beautifying the parcel. You know? Right, but, and then, and then, you know, we, we really want to see like aggressive marketing of that property. Just, I'm sorry, one other point, as you were talking, made me think was, you know. The, the missed revenues are, are real, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, year after year, if, if our hands are truly tied. You know, it would even be worth. The village to invest, you know, and, and, and try to come to some compromise, you know, to get something done, and I think that that would put a bad taste in everybody's mouth.
Oh, yeah.
But.
Well, we don't have the power to do that, by the way.
Well.
It would have to come through the industrial development agents.
Well, fair, fair enough, I didn't know, but. My point is simply that. If it can get developed, if it can be fair market value when it's fully developed, it's very much in our best interest.
We cannot, cannot agree anymore.
We agree.
Yeah.
Anyone else for public participation?
We have, um, one person in.
Sure, and then if you decide you want to, you will come back. Well, we have work in the next.
Christine Hunt, if you, if you'd like, you, uh, you may speak.
Thank you, Keaton. Uh, again, Christine Hunt, seventy-five Evans Street. I just wanted to briefly say, uh, thank you to Keaton and Judy for, uh, helping us with, uh. Gathering plaques and, uh, and getting the word out about the HPC, uh, plaque ceremony. And I do truly want to thank, uh, trustee E2 for helping us along with that and for participating and, uh. And, uh, handing out one of the plaques for us. It was really a great, um. Event, and I really appreciate everybody's help. Um. Last but not least, I would like to, uh, to wish Deputy Mayor Piazza a wonderful retirement. Thank you for what, over twenty-five years of service? Great job, really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome. Have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Thank you.
Any more hands raised? Uh, anybody online on Zoom, like to speak to the board?
Okay, ladies, last chance. Okay. Okay. All right, well, we'll keep the mic open for you. Okay. Okay, um, all right, so I will make a suspend, uh, make a motion to close the suspension of rules for public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll get right into reports and resolution. And I will make a motion to approve resolutions number one, two, three, four. Five, six, seven. As they appear on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and those basically, as you can see, cover, um, budget transfers and payroll and stuff, so. Um, resolution number eight, we are opening the Garrison Park pool this Friday, right, Friday, um, from eleven to seven. And, um. Uh, on that note, just while I'm thinking about it, I did talk to Chief Madigan today. About getting a figurative order, so he was going to talk to Jack, and I asked him to keep you in, because I. Ask, you know, pay for it, so, um, for the Garrison Park pool house. They've already trained them on it, and that was the request from, um, Jack O'Leary to have one in there then, so. So that's moving on. I don't know, it may, it may take a week or a couple of weeks to get her, I'm not sure, but. As soon as we can. Um, so resolve the following, or hereby appoint a seasonal recreation attendance for the twenty twenty-one summer season. Um, I'm just going to read their names, not their addresses or their pay rate, you can see that yourself. Lauren Akenjer, Carolyn Carlson, Aiden Comerford, Riley Doman, Megan Hernandez, John Kirsten, Hannah McHale, Samantha Mole. Uh, Haley Moreno, Abby Schroder, and Ethan Walensky.
So second.
All in favor? Okay.
So it looks like we have a full.
We do, yeah.
Awesome.
So we have a full.
We have three that are coming back. From two years ago, so.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, and, uh, the only, uh, mention that I have is we do have a village election tomorrow. Tuesday from twelve to nine here at Village Hall. Uh, no meeting, no voting at the meeting house. We do those for the bigger elections, for the village election that's here, and I know some people do go over there to vote. So, um, if you have neighbors or friends that are looking to go there, tell them to come here, so, uh, hope to see everyone tomorrow. Thank you.
And I hope that your responsibility and your privilege.
That's right. And next for his reports and resolutions is Deputy Mayor Piazza.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I'd like to take this opportunity to talk a little about the, uh. The NICAM.
Thank you.
And, and, um, whatever comments I, I may give, I would, I would encourage. Um, the other two folks who were there with me, or were there from the village. Uh, to add whatever you'd like to add and the stuff that you saw that you think we all should hear about, that might be good. So I'm going to talk just about a few things. Um, there was talk about social media. And, 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 uh, it brought up a lot of interesting points, a lot of it was over my head because I'm not a, a social media person, obviously. But, uh, and, and I know we use Facebook, um, do we use anything else? Any other, any other, we use Twitter?
Next.
It talks about several of them, um, in, in, in their presentation. Um, and, and, um, they're, they have ideas here on how things can be approved using social media. You know, pass it on to the one guy who can do it. So there, there you go. Second was on second, another topic, I think, was, is broadband. And, um. The, uh, the speaker recommended that we have, maybe do, a, a local telecommunications policy. Um, and, uh, for doing some of that, I, I would even recommend that if you want to talk to anybody at NICAM. Uh, Rebecca Rashito is, is in NICAM Council overseeing that stuff. And, um, she and a couple of other speakers at that point had some good ideas. Again, I have something. That I'm just going to pass on to whoever wants to take it, maybe I'll give it to you a little, little later. Um. But, uh, that was somewhat meaningful. Another one about marijuana legalization. And Chip, probably this is going to, uh, really fall on your shoulders. Um, it, it did mention the cities, villages, and towns may, out of allowing. Retail dispensaries or onsite consumption establishments. But the, the negative side of opting out, um, is that we would not receive any revenue. From the local cannabis tail stacks. So it's something that, that this board is going to have to think hard on. Uh, quite, quite a bit. Um, and, uh, if you do opt out, you have to do it before December thirty-first of this year. So I, I, I would suspect that, uh, Chip will, will give you whatever guidance you need for that. Um.
So, but to that point, I am putting that on our June, that's already on my list for our June twenty-second board meeting to start that discussion. For, for the marijuana.
Okay.
Yeah, I know we do have till December thirty-first.
There's a lot coming together on that in the, in, in the, the fairly near future, and it doesn't give, uh. Towns and villages a long time to decide whether to opt out or not. I think during the talk, they were talking about the fact that if you opt out, you can opt back in. I'm not sure if I'm saying this correctly or not, but I think if you don't opt out. Um, before the end of this year, you cannot opt out in the future.
Yeah, that's correct. But, but that's exactly right. You, you, the only time you can opt in is this year. If you opt out, you can opt, you can always opt back in, but if you don't opt out, you can never opt out. Unless they change the law, of course.
Very interesting. Um, and I have, uh, stuff on that. I'm not sure who I should pass this on to. Probably, uh, best of the Judy and, you mean, the distributor of Mary if you want to. Yeah. But, but, um, there was quite a, a lengthy discussion about it, um, and there are a lot of specifics. That I, I obviously didn't master all the specifics in one hour, but, but, uh, it, it's something this village certainly will be hoping for. In, in the very near future. Um, then there was a speaker from the National League of Cities, a gentleman named Clarence Anthony. Uh, he pointed out, um, as part of his talk, that a lot of federal money is coming through the American Rescue Act. And, and, and all municipalities should be, have, have plans ready to, uh, take advantage of this. This, uh, extra, uh, flow of money that will be taking place sometime in the near future. Um, he, he did say develop a plan which shows where the money is needed and, and, uh. Right away, I thought about the dam and sanitary sewer consolidation, or maybe other things, but those are probably. The two largest dollar items that the village is, is facing. You could all add. Any other comments you want to that, because we know, we know there are, there are several needs, and I, I saw the comments about grants that, uh. Keaton just, uh, sent out and, and, um. Possibly this is the year that, that a lot of money will come in. And, and some of those items is, is coming here. Um, anyway, good, good luck with it. Uh, it's, it's going to take a lot of effort, I, I suspect. But, um, it, it could give the village a, a chance to do some improvements that, that, uh. Would be difficult to do alone. There was a, 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 what's her, one, say now, Barbara Van Epps, um, gave, gave a talk and, and. Um, all the various, uh, budget legislation has, has happened at, at the state level. Uh, she did point out Chips has gone up, uh, winter recovery funding has gone up, uh, New York has gone up. Um, and a few other things, so. Um, it's one of these unusual years where the, the state is also getting a chunk of money that it didn't expect. Now that we have a Democratic, um, president, so it, it's possible that, that we could take advantage of some of these. And again, I'm, I'm going to pass these on to Keaton, because if you want to summarize it for everybody or, or, or distribute it to everybody. It's one of those things that, that, that could be pretty useful. Um, then I have an interesting discussion on COVID. You know, I, I have a question that I don't even know the answer. Is, are we employee now vaccinated? Do we know?
We're not asking.
We, uh, don't know that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then he, um, uh, Wade, Wade Beltramo was passionate about this, and he was saying, you know. We said, we closed the country down for fifteen months. And, and, and to make sure it stays open in the future, we. we really should insist that. He says, there is no law that prevents villagers from requiring vaccinations for all employees. But that's Wade's interpretation. He says, at the moment, there is no law preventing it. Um, there is no specific law promoting it. Uh, it, it's just one of these things that somehow, at least in New York State, uh, no definitive direction has been, has been given. So all we, but, but, um, all we can do is encourage. Um, I know how I feel, I know how, how others feel, and I'm not gonna get into a debate here, but, um, I, I do know that.
Nor should you.
I know, I know.
You can't discriminate against people that are not vaccinated.
You can't.
Yeah, but, but, uh, obviously, we have people in the village who are in contact with the public in various ways, including our PPW guys, and, and I know when I talked to a couple of other mayors about this during this talk, and, and, um, a couple of the, the mayors said, well, we know some have and we know some haven't. And, and she let it go like that. That even though Wade takes the point that, um, you can't be prevented, that only means it hasn't been tested in the courts yet. But those are some of the highlights that I, I, I kinda picked up on, and if, if, uh, Judy or Dave, you wanna make any other comments, but might be a good idea, if you wish.
I will.
Okay, you do have the resolution.
All right, well then, I think I hit one, one item. Whereas a property adjacent to the corner of Main Street and Herschel Drive has been developed by the property owner, and whereas the building falls on both the Village of Williamsville property located at fifty-nine thirty-three Main Street, and the Town of Amherst property located at fifty-nine forty-nine Main Street, and whereas various items have been discussed with regard to this building, including code enforcement services and fire protection services, among others, resulting in an intermunicipal agreement between the Village of Williamsville and the Town of Amherst that was signed in twenty sixteen. Now therefore, it may resolve that the mayor is here and authorized and directed to enter into a renewal of said intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Amherst for the next five years.
Another question? Why, why five years? Why not just forever? Do you know how many properties we have, oh, half in, half out of the town and village? I mean, just like the perimeter of the village, there's a half a dozen or more that don't have this.
Be, because the general municipal law, for whatever reason, only allows intermunicipal agreements to run for five years.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, learn something new every day.
So who wants a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And that's a trustee mayor.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, next for his reports is trustee Eto'o.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just a thank you to HPC, they had a wonderful plaque delivery, uh, presentation ceremony, uh, two weekends ago, it was very well received, uh, the plaques are wonderful, uh, they did a great job with those, and they're planning on doing another one in October. Um, also, thank you to the Parks Committee, who, uh, began the, the, the first public outreach aspect of the master plan that unfortunately I presented the week after COVID hit a year ago. This was the first opportunity to get out and actually be in the public. I will say that we were there from seven AM till one PM, and with, almost without fail, was received with, um, uh, resounding approval and, uh, general regard. Uh, they do plan on doing that more frequently, and also they have a parks cleanup and, in Island Park scheduled for Sunday, Saturday, no, it's the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah, oh, Sun- Sunday the twenty-seventh at Island Park. Um, so if anyone's interested in participating, that's from nine until eleven. So.
Okay, thank you, thank you trustee Eto'o, and next for her reports and resolutions is trustee Tori.
Thank you, Mayor Rogers. Um, I do have a quick report, and then I will go off agenda to read a resolution pertaining to the Knoll Nature Pavilion mural. But first, my report has to do with birthday, um, thanks to the beautiful weather two weekends ago, and the amazing volunteers and vendors. The Village of Williamsville celebrated another very successful birthday. Our celebrations consisted of five inspiring events, and I want to thank everyone who made the day so special, including Margie and her team from the Messenger Woods Wildlife Rehab Center, Jeanette from the Town of Amherst Recycling and Waste Committee, the Western New York Stormwater Coalition, Amy Aldino, and the Erie County Garden Note, Chairperson Jane Goldwinkle, and committee member John Nickerson from the Village Environmental Advisory Committee, uh, trustee Matt Eto'o, who was extremely helpful with sediment breakdown, thank you, Matt, I could not have done without you, and of course, the Dare to Repair Cafe and their incredible fixers, who helped more than thirty people, which resulted in nine items that were successfully repaired, of which seventy-seven pounds of potential waste was diverted from local landfills, and five hundred and fourteen dollars was saved on replacement costs. And I hope to have them back next year. Everybody enjoy the Dare to Repair Cafe.
Nice to know.
Now, uh, off agenda, my resolution today.
You have to make a motion to go off agenda.
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I make a motion to go off agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Uh, whereas the Glen Park joint board would like to hire a local artist, Alessandra Price, to paint a mural at the Knoll Nature Pavilion showing native species of insects, plants, and animals. Funding for the mural will come out of the Glen Park budget. Now therefore, be resolved that the village board of trustees authorizes the mayor to sign the contract with Alleyway Creative Agency, the Town of Amherst, and the Village of Williamsville, as the village representative for the Glen Park contract at a price not to exceed three thousand three hundred ten dollars, with fifty percent payment submitted with contract. The village board to have final approval of the rendering prior to the artist beginning her work.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that's it.
Um, thank you trustee Tori, and next for his reports is trustee Sherman.
Motion to go back on.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, one of us. Let me.
Return to the agenda.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to go back on agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, and next for his reports is trustee Sherman.
Thank you. Um, I do wanna thank the village board and the village in general for sending me to NICAM, which, uh, was a real eye-opener for me, um, and the funny thing is that that Wade Baltromo, I talked to him every other day, I think, when the whole dissolution thing was floating around. So now, I thought he was much older. The guy has so much energy, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, it does.
And I'm, I'm gonna put together a short list of talking points for the next meeting, but, as Basil mentioned, the marijuana legislation is interesting. They ta- talked about police discipline in a changing world, and we don't have a police department, but I think it's good to be, uh, up to speed on that. I did not attend the session on e-bikes, dirt bikes, and fireworks.
That sounded like a fun session.
Man, I should have gone.
Did you get to try out all of them? Now you tell me. But I, I enjoyed it very much, and a couple of things that I, I have to check. The, uh, constitution and bylaws of the fire department, because, um, well, this is just a good, uh, rule of thumb. Actually, I think it was, uh, John Bancini did that session, but that any board member who is a member of the fire department should not be voting on resolutions to spend money. Now, budget transfers, that's different, because the money's already been spent. But if you were gonna off, if you were gonna buy equipment or buy land for a new fire hall or something like that, I should recuse myself. Or somebody said, what if all the members of the village board are all members of the fire department too?
Well, then you can't.
You know, go home. And the other one was, I don't, I don't think we've done this in a long time, but I know that years and years ago, many years ago, once the fire department held a selection of officers, that list was sent to the mayor for approval by the village board. Now, I gotta look and see if that's still in the cast of, constitution, but I know like in the twenties, uh, the thirties, then, um, that's, that was the procedure. You weren't really, it's just like new members.
Yeah.
So anyway, I have to look into that, because it's not the biggest problem in the world, but.
That makes sense.
It'd be good to know. That's it.
All right, thank you trustee Sherman. Um, so any, um, staff reports, we're gonna get back into work session, so I, maybe we just hold off until we get comfortable, come to each other.
Just two quick announcements. So, uh, um, reiterating that the pool opens on Friday, and, um, Friday is actually the first year that the village will be observing, uh, Juneteenth. So Juneteenth is actually Saturday, but the village will be observing it Friday, so, um, just wanted to let everybody know.
We have no executive session. Um, I'll make a motion then to adjourn the board meeting for June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll get back right into work session, and we left off with the road drainage. Uh, Ben, are you still with us? Thank you, Nick.
Good night, Nick.
Is there, um, I know we, we covered a lot of ground with that, so. We're all good, yeah, thank you, thanks for coming. Have a good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Spencer's still on, and if there was anything else you wanted to.
Ben, are you there?
Oh, yeah, let's, you know what, let's take a short break, that's a good idea, yeah.
Okay, Ben, we're gonna take a short break.
Yeah.
Real short.
Real short.
Yep. It's got a text alert from Channel Two that, uh, oops.
Text alert from Channel Two.
From Channel Two. Basically, I'm there, I'll find it here, but it basically said that, uh, the governor has announced that New York State has reached seventy percent vaccination.
Well, I guess tomorrow's the big announcement, and, uh.
Felicia, New York has said seventy percent of adults with at least one dose of the vaccine. That will trigger a change to state rules, instantly many capacity restrictions, and, uh.
So some of those limitations may go out the window.
Yeah. Yep, yep. As soon as tomorrow.
Actually, it's all going down, right?
Yeah.
Some sort of celebratory, right, streets.
Canadians.
Uh, we opened up these, uh, doors.
Hey, you can hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you, Ben.
Okay, good, thanks.
But it's in her, Abby Schroder, yeah. Richard Schroder's her father, he used to work for the, for the Neeps.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so Richard's the father, Kelly's the mother, and Abby's the daughter. So, so, that's, that's, how will that make you feel? Well, she was a reporter, and then she went back to school and got like a degree in social work, and then didn't like it, and came back.
That was untrue. Okay, everything I said was on top. I'm talking about. Let's do that. He was married?
Yeah.
Yeah. Was it, was anyone?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm getting, because I don't really know her name.
Yeah.
And, yeah, she really popped that one up, so I couldn't, I didn't even know where to start with her, and, uh, Samantha felt terrible. It's just not gonna be a kind of reporter anymore, so. Oh, I thought, wasn't she on tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So. Well, yeah. One of those things.
Uh, it is what it is, yeah.
Yeah, learning. Learn by mistakes.
Well, that is true. That is quite true. But how many times were you there, the two callers, you know, did anything new? Remember they replaced the sign?
Yeah.
And then the sign was gone for a couple of days.
Right.
Maybe it's been, maybe somebody bought it.
No, we didn't. Yeah. We're just attracting attention.
Yeah.
That's, that's all they do.
Well, of course. Yes, yes.
Well, maybe not.
So. Yes, it is making it.
Oh, my God, it's horrible.
I think that like it was fifteen minutes today, hopefully it'll turn on.
I mean, we've got the windows open, and it's still not.
Yeah.
Well, we should wrap it up in a, like a half an hour, so.
It was fine when we first came in.
Spencer's still on, are you dying?
I'm still here.
All right.
Hey, Ben.
Hello, everybody. So it's still hot, still hot in there, Judy?
Yes. So I'll call around tomorrow.
It, it sounds like it might be a control thing. It may, that system may not be, uh, programmed to stay on while you're in the building. That would be my first thought. Did it cool down at all today?
No, I didn't, I didn't.
Just this room, the, our office is fine.
Yeah.
But this office has not cooled down at all.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think that might be a train question, honestly. But we can talk to Ron, he'll, 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 he'll talk to us for, for. I don't know what, I don't know what train's agreement is and what their service agreement looks like. That was through the fire.
Nothing. We pay for them. They have, they have one year of.
Okay. Well, then it, yeah, that, that's definitely something we need to look into, uh, and, and also on a long-term, uh, basis. Yeah, I mean, it'd be good to have a, a company that handles it affordably, reliably.
All right, so, were we done with Keaton?
I don't know, I was gonna, Ben, did you wanna ask anything about that or Scott?
Are we done? I don't know. I mean, Chip's still there. The, the conversation, I think, is in his boat right now. We had talked a little bit about a meeting on site to go over exactly what has to happen. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and, and I should say, their attorney initially suggested that, and I immediately agreed to it, and Ben agreed to it. Uh, unfortunately, his clients, the property owners, declined that. Um, so, you know, um, we're, we're in a bit of a difficult situation there, but I, I do think, and by the way, I looked up the stormwater, you're, you're certainly right, Ben, that, I mean, if there, if there's, and if, if that's an unpermitted illicit connection to our system, we can absolutely order that disconnected. So.
Or they have to get a permit for it.
Well, yeah. Yep. So, I, I mean, I'm.
Some other issues.
I, I'm hopeful or cautiously optimistic or whatever, that, that they're just venting some frustration right now, and that, that they'll be, you know, see that, that it wouldn't be in anybody's interest to have to go and argue about this stuff in court, or for us to write them up for their illicit connection, and, you know, so. So, we'll, we'll see. I, I will get back in touch with their attorney. I, I'm just still doing a little bit of research on their, their deed, as I mentioned earlier, it's a little, it's, it's unusual, uh, in terms of the description of the property boundaries. Um, so.
All right, I just, I wanted, um, to update, just so everybody's aware of where it's at, but so we'll, we'll keep it on the agenda, and we can.
Yeah, and. And. And I don't know if, because I just stepped back into, so I don't know how long you've been gone. But if there was a question about the Natali Development needs, man, I can just, I, I sent that over to their attorney. I have not, I haven't heard back yet, but I'll, 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 I'll follow up with him. I haven't heard back yet, but I'll, 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 I'll follow up with him also this week to see if they have any comments or concerns or markup or whatever.
Okay, I'm, like I said, I'm just leaving South Key Yuga and the Natali Development Easement on here, kind of until if there's something that changes, we'll discuss it, and if not, we'll just move on, so.
Yep.
Deputy Mayor Piazza.
I'm done.
You're, okay, trustee Eto'o.
We can strike number two.
I'll take it off altogether?
Yeah. Hour and a half arguing about it.
Well, I wouldn't say arguing. I would say discussing.
Sure.
Six of one, half a dozen of another. Any, anything else? Trustee Sherman?
Keaton, correct me if I'm wrong, WBA meeting is Wednesday?
Should be, yeah, next Wednesday, the 21st.
Twenty-third.
Sorry.
So it's not this Wednesday?
Twenty-third.
Okay.
I'm very mixed up.
Well, it's okay. That's why, that's why I asked you. Thank you. That's all I have.
Do you want to talk about anything to the NICAM conference anymore, or Cultural Conversations Committee street banners?
Somebody, the best thing I can just say is, people said, oh, did you go, did you get into town? Did you see any of those shops? I said, no, I never left the island.
Yeah.
There's too much going on.
Or was it straight, say, more?
That whole landing?
No, I'm pretty.
I mean, but, you know, that Wade Baltramo's. It's a dynamo. I don't. Oh, yeah, that's, that's putting it mildly. But, yeah, I mean, I appreciate the opportunity to have gone. People would say to me, how long have you been on the board? I said, oh, about eight weeks. So, it was good.
Yeah, that's good.
Something like you again.
Okay. So you have the Cultural Conversations Committee street banners.
Oh, yeah.
We had talked about that.
Yeah, and that's, and Judy and I talked about that too.
I think it figures.
He's the most important. I think they have nothing to say.
To be able to continue.
Can I just go ahead?
Yep.
The only thing about Knoll Nature Pavilion is that I go down there every day, and I review the mural, and it's absolutely fantastic. Beautiful, and people who stop by and watch it, it's great. Kids love it. But I also noticed, and I'm alluding to an email that Pete Warren sent, and he's so right. People come down to the park, they put their cars, and they sit in their cars with their engines running. Constantly. Now, if you're gonna go to a park, if you want to get out of your car and at least sit underneath the pavilion and eat your lunch, not every.
They don't.
So years ago, through the environmental, maybe they didn't have no idling signs put up. So, yeah, and I'd like to request more. And it was before your time, Ben, who's not listening now anyway, probably.
Hey, I'm here. Hey, I'm listening.
No idling signs, if that's possible.
Yep, hear it.
Sure, it's not that, I don't think it's not possible, but it's just, I don't know.
It do work.
I don't know if more is gonna make it. Maybe it will. I don't know. Because it definitely works when the wedding limos turn up over by the handicaps, they, they turn them off, because they see it. And, you know, I would like to point to a sign and tell the driver, read this, and then set it off, or you may have to go to the door and knock on their window and tell them, because I'm this close to telling them. Because the painter is there painting the wall, and all she is inhaling, all these, you know, carbon dioxide fumes from the cars, which is absurd. So I'd like to make requests if we have them. I don't know who made them either. It was years ago. But new, you know, maybe, maybe one that's more, one down there now.
One.
Yeah, it's not very, like.
Not a good place.
It's more subtle.
Yeah.
Subtle, so maybe you want to get something that's a little more, you know.
Work on that. I can do that.
Yeah, I, I, you know, you, you know.
It's like the no dogs allowed signs.
Yeah, I know.
Totally ignored.
Anyway, that's all I have. Okay. And I know Pete had other things in that email. He had like talked about the.
Oh, the parking lot in front of the, yeah, the porta potty thing.
Yeah, that getting pushed over.
Yeah, the porta potty's not on a stable cement block, and it was pushed over, which was disgusting. So it had to be erected, and of course, it was a mess. You know, it's just, I don't know, I mean, kids are trying to climb on the Knoll Pavilion roof. It's just, it's been, got a little crazy down there. We really have to have more police presence in the area. Unfortunately, Captain Brown has departed. But, you know, we actually, somebody actually had moved one of the picnic tables and tried to climb on the roof. You can see the fingerprints.
Captain Brown departed?
Yeah.
I mean, he left here, didn't he?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What's his name?
No, Officer Kevin.
Stevens?
Oh.
That's, that's why I was confused.
It's getting a little crazy.
And this happens every year right around the end.
Does it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's about.
We go through waves.
I made up nice signs that says, you're being smiling on camera, and I put them in the windows of the building. So people do go to the doors, they see now that they are on camera, so maybe that will help. I did, went ahead and did that. That's all.
All right. Well, the mural does look great. I drove by today, and it's absolutely stunning.
Thank you. That's just the beginning. Wait till it's finished. I love that, I, you know, I have to say that I'm, I'm so happy that that park is getting a new life breathed into it, and that the board is open to those ideas, because I feel that there was a period where they weren't so maybe open to change down there, and I, and I think that, you know, that all of the changes have been really positive.
I agree. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so department head reports. Attorney Greco, do you have anything else?
No, not this evening.
Okay. Administrator Kenja?
I have two things.
Okay.
The town, I forwarded the emails to everybody. They will be paving and, and painting the parking lot.
On Sunday.
Sunday, June 20th, which is Sunday. The Island Park is not rented, so that's good. But you can still get in the park.
The whole thing?
I think they're doing the whole thing.
Yeah.
And then my other thing is Kelly sent everybody their committee's rosters. So please look through them, make any changes, and get them back to her because we have working on reorg.
Yeah, and so please look at those lists, and, you know, either if it's easier to do an email to people or a group email just saying, you know, we're doing reorg. Are you interested in being reappointed? Are you, you know, or if it's easier, phone call, whatever. But, you know, I think it's important to have a list. If, if you're on a committee, I, I think the expectation should be that you contribute something throughout that time. But unfortunately, there are committees, and there have been in the past, where you have people just sitting on a committee for name sake. And to me, all that does is muddy the waters, because then you don't really know when you're looking to do a project, like a parks cleanup. If you look at your list and you have fifteen people on the parks committee, you're thinking, oh, I got fifteen people. But really, only like five of those people ever show up. So that's all I'm just saying. So just encourage people, if they are gonna sit on a committee, that they try to contribute at least one time, or one, you know, one event, or one, one ask, what you call it.
Check through with your chairs to see if there's anybody that they suggest you don't renew.
And, and then check obviously with the chairs to see if they want to stay on as a chair, you know.
What if there are recommendations they don't renew? What do we do then?
I'm talking about in reorg. We can, yeah, have to, you know, find out.
There may be on one of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Find out and re, you know, and, you know, let's talk, let's find out what the reason is, and we'll talk about it every year.
That's good.
So. Okay, uh, do you have any here?
No, actually, I'm good. I don't have anything else to add. Thank you.
Okay, what about you, Ben? Do you have anything else?
Uh, no. Where do I begin? You, you know, we're just trying to do the best we can with what we got. I am hampered. We are hampered by a pretty serious labor shortage at the moment. Just in terms of trying to find some, what we would normally have as seasonal help, just isn't materializing. And if it, you know, it, as the summer goes on, it's for my residents that the second and fourth Mondays are the days to put out your bulk items as far as the brush, the concrete, and electronics. And that we ask that they be put out 6:00 PM the previous night. Don't try to catch us with loads of brush the day we're going down your street at, you know, whatever time it is. That causes some difficulties. So if everyone cooperates, things will move a lot smoother. And then furthermore, at the meeting house, good on, I'm glad to hear a rejuvenation of the committee is underway. And it speaks to the value of the committees and the amount of help that they do offer the DPW. I encourage it. We're here to facilitate it. We just have to have open communication and make sure we go through that the processes that are in place for procurement and whatever projects the committees dream up. So that's my, that's my report, and if there's any other questions, I'll take them at this time.
No, no, no questions. We're good.
Thanks all.
All right, thank you. All right, so I guess that's it. We're, we're all set. So thank you, everyone, for coming and staying, and I'll see you all in two weeks.
We will.
No tomorrow? Well, that's wild. Hold on, you just forget. We do have that. We keep still getting the, that's a. I have it on my calendar. I was planning on being here. I just.
What is that procedure?
So we have to verify the election results.
Right.
So the polls close at nine o'clock, and we usually get here, you can get here, you know, at nine or a little before, whatever suits you. And then we wait around for the tallies with the machines to kind of tally what the vote is. And then they'll bring out, and they'll tell us what the vote is, and then we need the board to be certified of these results. So we put forth with a motion to prevent, for the two seats. And that's basically it, and then we adjourn the meeting. So it's just a very quick meeting, but it is an official board meeting. So don't forget to be here.
Was there an official adjournment?
I, what's that?
Do I get service order?
Oh.
Two in here.
Okay.
Well, we didn't need them, yeah.
I, I just didn't want to.
I have a question, actually. No, I think. You don't have to adjourn more questions.
Oh, no, no, all right, never mind.
We just adjourned.
Just end. All right.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
You're welcome.